Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend. Officer Luna, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Clerk, my call to, or, roll call.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilwoman Corey?
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Here.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Here.
Okay, do we have any changes on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move along. Okay, Mayor's welcome. I'm glad to see the public is here today. We welcome your comments. I'd also like to thank three gentlemen that are responsible for all this technical stuff. We got Kyle over here, and we got Addison over there in a blue shirt.
Thank you so much.
Sounds bad with names. Anyways. So, thank you all for coming. You go with public comment now? Anybody has a comment?
Agenda items only? Agenda items only?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Barbara Ogle, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Benita Citizens Group, and this morning we are speaking on green sheet item 2105-101. As the city goes forward with ideas for the future development of the Imperial Crossing Bamboo Village property, we ask that you consider for a more natural bank on both sides of the river, with enough room for floating docks to allow for boats to travel up the river and have better access to downtown. We also see the current seawall as a potential safety concern, as if anyone falls into the river, it would be a hard, difficult climb to get back out. If an engineering study is approved and staff does move forward with the study and repair cost estimates, could the council also ask for estimates on a more natural seawall at the same time in order to save some money? That information might be valuable for future planning and possible grant monies. The group would also at this time like to thank the mayor, city council, and city staff for their efforts during this past year while the city hall was being renovated, as well as the COVID-19 restrictions. We would also like to commend Arlene and the entire city staff for making these meetings possible under very difficult circumstances, and for working to get the parks refurbished and open again. Our thanks to Derek for answering all our many questions and for the work he has done for the city. We wanted you all to know how much we appreciate what you have done over the past months and are looking forward to working with you in the renovated city hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Shall we move on to the consent agenda? Make a motion to approve at all?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Any comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna try and get number nine, A. Mr. Corey, please.
Okay, a couple of minutes.
We're supposed to be in the city hall next week, next meeting.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I just wanted to make a comment on the skate park with some information that I found out yesterday at the Art and Public Places meeting, that I spoke with Nicole, and we're hopeful that that skate park will be done a lot sooner than two years.
Okay, thanks. You're out of order, but that's okay.
No, I'm not. We're talking about the consent agreement.
Yes, Mr. Corey has the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. At the April 7, 2021 meeting, we discussed having an eagle cam located somewhere in Benita Springs for the citizens. A location has been found. It's on Spring Creek. It's on the number six hole of the Creekside Golf Course of Benita Bay. The eagles have been nesting and raising their young there for as long as I've lived in Benita Bay, for 14 years. I've been in discussion with Jim Unland, who is one of the big proponents in Benita Springs, about the eagles. He reviewed the site as well as I did, and we can locate a camera pretty far away from the nest so that we're not disturbing it, and we can broadcast out a signal of the activity in the nest. The Benita Bay Country Club has granted us access to the tree because it's on their property. So, we'll, and the Benita Bay Community Association will provide the lift trucks necessary to get equipment in the neighboring tree so that we can set up a camera and start broadcasting. So, what I'm asking today is to find out if council wants to proceed for staff to work with possible vendors. There's a few companies in the U.S. that set up these camera equipments and help with broadcasting the signal. But to go ahead and start investigating that, but we do have a site, we do have access, we have the cooperation of both Benita Bay and the Benita Bay Community Association to help out in getting this thing started. There's some issues with respect to what kind of equipment. Do we want to hardwire it into receptacle? Do we want to use solar power? How do we get the signal out? But those are technical items that we're going to need the expertise of a company that is familiar with how to do this. So, all I'm asking at this point is that there's a consensus that we move ahead, that staff go ahead and be able to talk to vendors and bring back a proposal.
Is everybody in favor? Does it have to vote on this? Amy?
I'm in favor of working out the technology and to be certain that if we go forward with it, that we protect the eagles. But we need somebody that knows what they're doing and has done it before, so I'm very much in favor of that.
Fred?
Yeah, I'm in favor of moving forward. Only concern I have, I'm not worried about the public, but every community has residents, and are they gonna flock over there and, you know, get real close to the tree and stuff like that?
No, I don't think so. That eagle nest has been used by the eagles, as I say, for as long as I've lived there, 14 years, and probably much longer than that. So, it's not a, it's not something new, it's not a new attraction within.
Well, then, I'm in favor of at least getting a price for doing it.
Chris is, are there any houses really close to that?
There's a couple of houses across the fairway.
It's part of Benita Bay's property?
It's part, it's all, this is all within the gates. This is all Benita Bay property. There's a few houses across the fairway.
We don't have to advertise where this tree is at?
No. It's right next to Spring Creek, and across Spring Creek is very wooded.
It's within the gated community, so we don't have a whole bunch of public.
Right.
So, I'm in favor of it. Do we need a vote on that, or?
No, I believe we have direction. What we'll do is work with the contacts that Chris has provided to staff, and Laura and her team will start putting some information together, and then we can have some cost estimates for your council to vote on in the future and possible budget transfer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Purdon, we have Mr. B., 9B?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This letter is in conjunction with a letter from Sanibel. I'm sorry, can y'all hear me? Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
So, this letter is pretty much a follow-up to, and in support of, a letter that Sanibel did to the Army Corps of Engineers, and the issue is that we have been, we're currently in, and I'll make it really clear, so like if people don't understand, if you do, forgive me. I just want people to understand what's going on. But there's this mechanism for lake operations that we're currently under, and it's, you'll hear the acronym when water people are talking sometimes, and it's called LOSOM. Okay, so that's the Lake Operating System, and that deals with the amount of water that's gonna come out, what direction it's gonna come out, and for folks who are maybe not familiar with Lake Oh, there's really two main receptacles, two ways out. You can go out to St. Lucy, or you can go out to Kalusahatchee. Okay, so the other member of Congress on the East Coast, a gentleman by the name Brian Mast, somewhat recently put out a bill that essentially would keep St. Lucy out of releases, which obviously with the lake being two feet, two and a half feet higher than it's been since 2018, is a scary proposition for Southwest Florida, because 2018, we got smashed. 2019, we were okay. 2020, we got COVID. So, being an ecotourism-driven economy, it's very important that this side of the state advocates right now, while we can, that the next model of LOSOM, which they're formulating right now, really takes this side of the state into account, and we have equity in regards to the releases. So, as it currently is, St. Lucy isn't taking any, and their stance is that we don't need to do releases, period. That is, their thought is we just need to send it south. But the reality is, just sending it south, the EAA reservoir, which is the area directly under the lake, can't take all the water, right, and it's two and a half feet higher, so there's gonna have to be releases. The point is, when there's releases, it can't be in a way where St. Lucy's out and it all comes to us. Because the problem with the freshwater releases, so everybody's clear, is when the freshwater gets released into our estuaries at high levels, it creates the appropriate environmental atmosphere for red tide, blue green algae. And those are the things that not only destroy the ecology of the estuaries, but our economy, because we're based on these things. So, the first model of essentially what is a three-model process has already come out, and the first model was very detrimental to Southwest Florida. So, with that being said, that we wanted to get on record right now that before you get to two, before you get to three, and then you say for the next 10 years, this is how it's gonna be, that Southwest Florida gets to have their say in this. So, you know, from a congressional side of the House, I can tell you that Congressman Donalds has sent five models that would be advantageous to Southwest Florida and also would work with the other coast. Additionally, we have a meeting with Colonel Kelly on Thursday of next week, where we're gonna be expressing numerous issues that we have with the first release schedule. Now, the problem is, the first release schedule was not supposed to be the basis for everything, but apparently it looks as of now as if the first, the first release models are what they're using to base the second release models. So, if we're starting from a disadvantaged position from the beginning, that's no way to move forward. So, here's one technical component of it that people should really understand. So, we are, if the lake, I don't want to use props, but okay, so with the lake as it is being measured currently, we are not being measured at the same place as the other coast is. So, therefore, it doesn't account for a significant amount of basin runoff. So, it's really, we're getting twice, and many times more than that, twice what the actual numbers say, which is still larger than St. Lucy. So, all of these things are very problematic for us. So, by doing this letter, essentially, we're getting to the Army Corps of Engineer via another vessel. Now, they've heard from St., they've heard from Sanibel, they're hearing from the congressman, they're hearing from South Florida Water Management District, they're hearing from the governor's office, but they need to hear from all of the cities who are gonna be affected, because this is our lifeblood. If this model goes into a 10-year situation, and it is a model that is solely advantageous for the other coast, we're in a bad spot. So, we need to, right now, before it gets farther, not only say that it needs to be balanced, but we need to acknowledge the fact that we saw the first iteration, and iteration one was not good. So, like I said, Congressman Donalds and staff were meeting with Colonel Kelly on Thursday, because, you know, we turned over the models frankly after the first round, and they tried to tell us, hey, maybe you guys should just give it to us after the second round. And I said, I don't think so, because after the second round, it's gonna be even harder to change things. So, it's kind of a back and forth right now, but the bottom line is this. In a very short order, if they do not take their time and think about our side of the equation, we're gonna have a 10-year lake release schedule that is gonna be detrimental to us as a coast. This letter is simply elevating and reminding them that you need to take your time, and you need to make sure that this coast is accounted for before they move forward. So, I can take questions if anybody has anything. I hope that wasn't too much, but I wanted to make sure people can understand.
Yes, Jesse. If it goes south, like it's originally did?
Right.
Is that water so polluted that it would kill the Everglades?
It's not necessarily that it would, well, right now, currently, we have a 500-square-mile patch of blue-green algae floating on the top of Lake Oh. So, if they started opening releases right now, literally at the very top, you have 500 square miles of blue-green algae that's coming right here. So, again, I mean, I don't like to, you know, press the panic button when I don't think it's necessary. If we get a 10-year plan, when, that's gonna be bad for us, and the lake is two and a half feet higher than it's been, and it currently has 500 square miles of algae on the top of it, we have, we have to say something now, because if we don't, it's not gonna be good. So, this is just another voice going to Army Corps to let them know we are, the 65,000-plus people of Benita Springs are concerned, and they want to make sure that there's equity in the balance coming out of Lake Oh, meaning it's gonna go to the East Coast and it's gonna go to the West Coast. Now, Kalusahatchee, to be fair, is a little bit bigger, so we can take more. But as it currently is, they're not getting any, and even when they are taking some, we're taking almost twice, and that's if you just consider the actual numbers, not to consider the entire watershed all the way down to the lock dam that is getting added onto that and not even being accounted for.
Okay. Is, we are receiving freshwater flow constantly? And then when it gets high, then they dump it, or it's a constant flow, right?
Right. Well, part of the, part of this next thing with the release schedule, it'll try to get, you know, when we need water in the dry season, we'll make sure that we have it, and then it's gonna make it so that hopefully it's lowered throughout, and then we aren't getting decimated during the wet season. The problem is, they don't lower it, then wet season comes, the East Coast says they don't want it, and then we get smashed. You know, and I mean, if you think about, even our relationship with agriculture is kind of interesting from the water side of it, because sometimes we're simpatico, but during dry season, I'm sorry, during wet season, they don't want any. You know, during dry season, they're happy to share it with us. During wet season, they don't want any. But any way you look at it, for the entire, for the totality of this Lake Oh operation management system, just due to where we're at geographically, we've been the receptacle for all of the policies that are made up there. And right now, with 500 square miles of blue-green algae floating on the top, and the lake being higher than it's been in two and a half years, and coming off the heels of COVID, we have to make our voice heard now, because it'll be too late after it gets out. And right now, my hope is that honestly, we can stall, and I hate to say that openly and honestly, but I'm being honest. I hope we can stall, because if we don't stall, that leads me to believe that the Army Corps of Engineers is gonna go with the first iteration, and that for me, that's not a good scenario for us.
This is politics, I guess you call that, and it's a man-made problem.
It is.
It's just, it's not, God didn't make us, didn't make this problem. We did, the people, years and years ago. Because one time there was a flood, and now we dammed it. Anyways, we can send this letter. I hope it does.
May I join the conversation?
What did you say?
Amy. Excuse me. Sorry.
Yes, Amy.
I just have a couple of comments. You know, I think anybody that read the letter that Holly Smith sent or the things that we've done in the past would subscribe to, we understand, at least I think most of us understand the problem. My question is, is how effective is this activism? And, you know, we could sign the letter, and I don't know who's gonna read it and whether it's gonna mean anything. So, if we're truly interested in doing activism, I think we have to reach out to all the communities in Southwest Florida and other members of the U.S. delegation. I mean, there are two problems. We have a bill in the U.S. Congress that is setting this policy where nothing goes east, or we need to counteract that in the U.S. Congress. And we would ask Representative Donalds to spearhead that. And we need to send letters to every single community that's affected by this and asking them to do the similar thing. And I would be curious to see what this, these meetings that you have next week come out of it. I think we all agree we want to go in a certain direction, but whether we can really be effective by our activism, right now, I found, find doubtful, because we've sent letters like this before to Army Corps of Engineers. This is the first letter that's been there. So, it's not gonna hurt to send it, but I think we as a city should be on the forefront of spearheading a more collective action if we want to do something. Otherwise, we'll send the letter, we'll forget about it. That's my opinion.
Just a quick on that. I would say that 100% you're correct in the fact that we've done this before. I would say that the difference now is that for a number of years, East Coast, particularly Congressman Mast, has been running roughshod over this process. That's not the case anymore, and that's why we're meeting with the Army Corps. I know Mayor Holly Smith has asked the other municipalities to jump on, so I know she is trying to organize a regional effort like that. But to how it can be helpful, I will tell you that when we meet with Colonel Kelly on Thursday, we're gonna let him know that the 65,000 citizens of Benita Springs feel that this is problematic, and they've reached out to us, and that the city of Sanibel has done the same thing, and we have concerns throughout Southwest Florida. And if we get any letters after that, you know, we'll include that in it as well.
Well, and Lee County, the Lee County Commissioner should be operating on this too. And also, we could make an appeal to, if we really believe in this, we should have emails sent to the Army Corps of Engineer management from all our people. Just put an appeal out, send a letter. We want to have our points that have been addressed by our elected officials considered. So, if they get 50,000 emails, maybe they'll listen. But, you know, again, I'm just kind of cynical at this point, but I'm not against the letter. I think we should do it. But if we're really gonna do this, let's go in there with both barrels.
And I'd just like to add, I think the city of Benita's letter is more appropriate than Sanibel's letter. Sanibel's letter is a bit hostile and aggressive, but are we also ignoring what Governor DeSantis announced on May?
7th.
10th. That he is focused with the U.S. Army Corps to reduce the harmful discharges. So, should we let the governor and the team that are there to observe do their stuff? And then, like, just sort of say, we support the governor in his efforts, which is basically what we're saying, instead of trying to do a battle by ourselves, that we're behind the governor. Governor, please stay forward, thinking about the Everglades and the discharge that you led off from Lake Okeechobee would be my leaning.
And just to that, I would like, okay, so just so everyone understands how this works, this is the Army Corps who operates it. So, we've been speaking to the governor's office, and I think that the governor did a very nice letter two days ago, essentially saying, you know, we have to do better. But I felt that the letter fell short in the sense that it didn't say that iteration one was detrimental to Southwest Florida. And I was, it really, you can't be this far in the process and ignore the fact that the train is moving. So, the governor's saying that we need to do it, we need to do it better. 100% we agree with you. But from our side of the state, we would take it a step further and say, not only do we need to do better, but we saw, first reading of three, we weren't pleased with it. So, here are all of our issues. And, you know, the governor's office said to our chief of staff, he said, I'm not the governor of West, we're not the governor of just West Palm, we're governor of Florida. So, I don't think that they're predetermined to, they're against us in any way, shape, or form, but the problem is, they aren't the ones who make the decision. They get to opine to the Army Corps of Engineers on what they think they should do, just like both congressional offices will do and just like each city will do. Then, all of that commentary and thought process will be boiled in a pot with Army Corps, and then they'll make their decision. So, yes, we agree with the governor. However, we need to take it a step further and have advocacy from our side of the state, because the governor did it holistically for the state. We need to do it specifically for our side of the state, because the other side, for 10 years, has been doing that. So, we need to step up to the plate now and say, yes, you're correct, it needs to be a balanced system, but we've already seen the first step. It doesn't look good. If this is for 10 years, take more time if you have to get it right, but we, the Southwest Florida has to be considered.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, two things. First of all, I agree 100% with what Jesse's saying. Second of all, Jesse, what's the word on when will they have the dike, the berm, or whatever, around Lake Okeechobee repaired to where they can accept a much higher level?
I heard it is, I heard it's close, and I don't have a date. I think, yeah, I've heard the end of '22, and I've heard '23 both, so I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, that should help out.
And the other one's coming online too. You know, C-43 and C-44 will help, but it's still, the problem is still, it's a way, it's, those are little pieces that will help, but that's not, you know, as you know, Fred, it's a piece of many pieces that we need to make this flow in an appropriate way for us.
No, I, I, I'll make a motion. We send the letter. Prove it.
Second, as long as you fix the typo in it.
Yeah.
Deal.
It has a S-79 in twice, one of them should be 77.
Oh, gotcha.
The Morehaven one.
Morehaven's wrong.
I got a question for Jesse. Is, the Corps of Engineers, that's a federal government.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, they're the ones who run it.
They can ignore us forever, and the governor and everybody else.
But the thing, the great thing with the congressional involvement is the fact that Army Corps of Engineers comes to U.S. Congress for their money. And luckily for us on this coast, our congressman is on budget. So, not only are we on budget, but they have to come with us. So, like, when we go to these PDT, these Product Development Team meetings, and it's all the vested stakeholders south of the lake, every city's there, every county's there, but the two voices that matter the most are gonna be the feds, because they're the ones that pay them.
Yeah, I have a lot of faith in Congressman Donaldson. I was on his telephone.
I heard you.
Yeah, good. That was neat. So, I, we move forward on this. Any more comment? We can take a vote. Amy?
I'm in favor of sending the letter, but I'd also like to have a subsidiary notion of whether we should try to be more active in employing other areas, other entities, like other communities. Do we want to take the, ask the staff to send letters to everybody?
Well, we have, we have a senator.
Right, but.
Federal government. Federal government, you know, we have a congressman.
I'm suggesting that, no, he was already doing what he's supposed to be doing. But I'm suggesting that we outreach to all the southwest Florida cities and ask them to do a similar thing. And that perhaps, if we're interested, put out a little blurb on our website and say, hey, this is the problem. Can we have individual activists send emails to this address? And this is the gist of it. Do we want to do that? If we don't want to do it, we don't have to. But I think we should.
I think it's a great idea.
So we could vote first on the letter, and then we could discuss this, if that's okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out, for, for, not all the council was, the current council was seated, but if you recall, a couple of years ago, the city of Bonita Springs was engaged in a lawsuit with the Water Management District over the minimum flows and levels. In many ways, what the Army Corps is doing is part political, but it'll ultimately become a rulemaking process. And when the rules determining which levels of flow go out in the East Coast and the West Coast get determined, the city, as it did at that time, may join with other cities as individual stakeholders. When those individual stakeholder claims are made, the Army Corps may try to dismiss those claims based on, well, you're just signing up at the last minute. So I just want to point out that these letters that come individually from each city carry some weight in saying, no, this is, we're not a Johnny Come Lately. This is an issue that is of concern to us, and has been of concern to us for some period of time. So I just want to point out that it's good to point out what the congressional offices or the senators or the governors doing. But the city may need to have its own place at the table as a litigant at some point in the future. And so having a letter that discusses our issues in particular, maybe lends support to other efforts, is important.
100%.
Thank you, Jared.
And to that point, exactly why the letter timing, the timing of this is so important now. Because, so if you look at this kind of like city government operates, they do first, second, and third reading in it, but it's just called iteration one, two, and three. Iteration one is done. Our coast has given them models for iteration two, but it's already underway. The question is, are they going to incorporate those or not? We won't know until they come out, which is a month and a half from now. Then after iteration two, all there is is iteration three, and they're making a decision. So like, like you guys know, if, getting through first reading isn't necessarily always as hard as second reading, you know, or vice versa. This is a situation where it is, the ship's only going to get harder to move as it goes. So us getting on now explains, hey, we had a problem, if they go to a three that isn't good for us, we can say, we were mad at iteration one, and we gave it to you before you did anything on iteration two. Then you did two, and we complained, and then you did three anyway. So it's setting up the time work that, hey, you're only on one, step one of a three-step process supposedly. And if that's the case, we want to be on the record now saying, we saw the first one, it wasn't good, two and three need to be better.
We can vote.
Okay, call for a question? Roll call.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
While I have great faith in Governor DeSantis, Derek makes a.
You're out of order. It's yes or no. Aye or nay or nay. Come on, get with the program.
Derek made a very good point. So on that condition, I'm going to vote in favor.
Well, thank you.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cory?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Here, may I follow up and see if there's any interest in the city in becoming more active along the lines that I outlined?
Are you going to spearhead that campaign?
I'm going to ask the staff to help me, yes.
Okay.
Okay. I propose that we, that I get with Arlene and devise some kind of method where we do outreach to all the southwest Florida cities. And that we devise a method by we ask for individual citizens of Bonita Springs to send emails to some, the Army Corps of Engineer personnel that parallels our letter, that the concepts in our letter. That's what I propose.
You have my blessings on that, for sure.
Well, we have to agree that.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Mayor, before, before we take a vote on it, we have to see if there's any members of the public want to comment on the item, since it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay.
Anybody care to comment?
Seeing none?
And I would say maybe Holly Smith might be a good person to reach out.
Well, we'll work it out.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Carr?
Yes.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cory?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay. Now we come on to Mrs. Steinmeier's article here. We all should have pictures of the seawall down at Bamboo Court, at Bamboo Imperial Crossing. Do you have those pictures in front of you? Here you go. When I go over, over the river on Old 41, we built a beautiful river, bridge that we could see, see the river. But what I see is an old, broken-down, gray concrete canal. It's ugly. It's the ugliest thing in Bonita. And we either got to tear down that wall or fix it. It's our responsibility, it's our property. The people should be using that property. They paid for it. It should be safe. It's, in my opinion, should be a park. We don't need any more businesses. We've got businesses all over the place. Amazon's putting them all out of business. I prefer, we put it out to bid and find out what it's going to cost to fix that wall. And we don't have to fix it, but at least we know what, find out what we're looking at. I don't think we can depend on some developer coming along and throwing, throwing the money at it. Because we needed, the people want access to that river. And this is the only safe way that we can give access to the river. I also consider running a sidewalk from Wilson down to the river along Old 41, and run from Goodland or whatever that road is on the south, on the north side, down the river, along the road, next to Old 41. So it's handicap accessible, and such a pitch, maybe 12 feet, so we could get a vehicle down there to pick up the garbage and maintain the park down there. Those are my two wish lists. It's up to you. I make a motion, we make a request for bids to repair or replace or remove that seawall. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Can we require that they have to have an engineered solution?
Excuse me? I'm sorry. He was also talking. Go ahead.
Yeah, can we have, can we amend it to where the proposals have come in have at least got an engineer? Because you'd have to have that anyway to get the permit.
Well, sure.
Okay. I'll second.
I have a question. Is the seawall incorporated into the property that is currently bamboo that is going to be up for development?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So my only hesitation is spending money on it because, and here's the reason why. We haven't decided what's going to go at bamboo. So what type of seawall goes there should probably be congruent with whatever we develop. And additionally, it's going to be expensive, and we can make them pay for it. So that's just my thought. If you guys don't agree, that's fine. But I mean, I think honestly, that us to select and/or pay for this now is an expense that we really are going to be able to pass on quite easily. And then it'll also ensure that it's congruent with what we want down there. So from the fiscal side of the House, I would just say that that's my suggestion, that's my thought, so.
Can I make a point? I think Jesse's got a good point. The only thing is, we're only getting pricing and proposals. And by the time we get that, we may even have a developer or somebody. So you're not going to get this overnight.
But, but, but you don't know, the thing is, I just didn't want to spend the money, because I think I can have some.
There's no, there's no money in this first step.
We haven't spent a dime yet. We're just asking for proposals.
I'm with you, Jesse, but it doesn't cost anything to get pricing.
Yes, Amy.
I agree with many of the things that Jesse has said. I think there's an issue about safety that needs to be addressed, which I thought the staff was looking at that. I think it's premature to even get a pricing for a seawall when we're not even 100% sure that's what we want. I'm intrigued by some of the comments that have been coming from our citizens who said that they wanted to have a natural look there. Again, we're very close, I assume we're having a workshop in the next couple of weeks that we're going to talk about what we want down there. And I think it should be integrated with whatever the plans are there. Even if you have a park, we don't have a design for it, other than the one that was proposed by DPC, which I personally like. But, you know, we haven't as a council made those decisions. So I would prefer that we secure it from a safety point of view, continue to review ideas that are coming forward. And in our workshop, this could be a major part of the focus, what we want to see down along the river. So I think this is just premature.
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, I want to clarify that the proposal will be to get an engineering firm to come up with a design, as seconded by Fred, and then to, that will also include a preliminary estimate. But it will not be final pricing at this point, because until we actually go out to bid, it's just an estimate.
Yes, but it's for a design of a seawall. That's, I thought, what the proposal is, that I'm not sure a seawall is something we want to have explored at this point. We haven't made that decision.
Well, that's, that's what's being discussed right now.
What you mean by seawall, Amy, it's?
It's a wall, you know, vertical wall.
Well, is it riprap, or is it?
No, it's a wall, like, like what we have that's fallen apart.
I think we would have an engineering study about both a seawall under your definition and riprap.
Well, that isn't in the proposal. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of having different ideas brought forth and analyzing that. But even that, I don't know how you could even make a decision if you don't know how it's going to work into what we dream of as the, a park portion of the bamboo property.
If, if the mayor will oblige me, if there's another member or the mayor and Councilman Forbes would look to amend their, their motion to have the engineering firm provide alternative designs in addition to just a replacement seawall, then at least you would have those options come back to you.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Kind of make one point. If we do do this, make sure that we get somebody that's familiar with this issue. Many times, a seawall on each side of a bridge is there to prevent one thing, erosion of the bank during floods, because the water's going by real fast. And you don't want erosion of the banks by a bridge, because then you can end up with big problems. So that needs to be looked at.
And that's what we have there right now.
What do you think this will cost, Derek?
All you'd be doing right now is seeking qualifications from a firm. We would put out an RFQ, we'd rank those firms and select someone to do the design.
But so here's the question, the.
Or you want to use someone our library services? Okay.
So somebody who's in our service, so what if, so if we decide what we want on bamboo, what if they don't want to work with the people that we pick right now?
Not a problem.
Are we, are we, do we have to pay somebody to tell us how much it costs to fix that wall?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Why?
Because you'll have to have the wall engineered, designed, because the contractor won't know what.
The contractors have engineers.
If they put their seal on it, yeah.
Why don't we just ask for a bid to fix the wall, or remove the wall? As simple as that. How much it costs to fix it? How much it costs to remove it? Period. And send it out to how many, how many people build seawalls in this, in this area? Not very many.
Well, your proposal was for an engineering.
No, I didn't say that. I said to fix the wall.
Well, I mean, I'm just going off of what your green sheet said, it was engineering first.
Right. So my issue was engineering costs. And I don't think that maybe we all understood that we would have to pay engineering costs. So maybe, again, if we're going to get somebody else to pay for it, I'd rather. But I don't, you know, as Amy said, the safety side, I want to make sure we're safe. But I don't want to pay people to tell us what could or couldn't go there, and what they could build there, if they're not inevitably the people that are going to be working with whoever we select for downtown. Because then what do we do? Now they're in a three-month process of engineering, putting it together. And then we're like, all right, we're going to make a deal for downtown. We do a deal, and we're like, hey, here's what we want for the river. What if that's not what, what goes with the plans? What if it's not how they would have liked it? What, I mean, I just feel like we're potentially setting ourselves up to spend money and then not be able to use them. And when we can get private money to pay for this whole thing instead of the city government.
I personally.
I agree.
I'm more concerned to how constraining it would be for anything we want to design in the future. We're a couple of weeks away from making a decision. I don't understand why there's this urgency at this point, other than the safety issue. And I hope that the staff has already looked at that and has secured it in a way that it's not a problem. Again, is that, that's where the bridge used to be, and we took it down? So is that where we're going to, do we want to put another bridge there? I don't know. How does it? I can't recall DPZ's design there, whether they had a bridge there in their design or not. But that's the only concept that we have at this point. And it's never, it's not been adopted by the council. And if we don't want that, then we need to do something else.
I think it's been decided they want access to the park. They want a park there. The people want a park on the river. It's not safe. The wall's got to be fixed eventually. It's got to be fixed before we do any building on that property, because you can't fix it from the water, because of the bridges. There's a big erosion problem at the, on the north side of the river, at the bridge. The wall's falling into the, into the, into the river. It's ugly as you all get out.
I agree with all that.
We can fix it now.
Let's call the question.
Yeah, if we don't do this, what we need to do anyway is get up some signs and put down along the wall, warning people to stay away from it, don't walk on it, whatever the magic words are. And we do need to know whether we have a developer or what, whether we make a park out of. Do we need a retaining wall to keep the banks from eroding near that bridge? There isn't any on us that can know that. None of the staff. We need to find that out. And that shouldn't be that hard to find out. So that, those are two things we need to do. Because no matter what, we got to tell the developer what we found out on that. Then they can get their own experts.
Okay, John Dahmer?
I'd make a motion to table this.
I'll just withdraw him a second. How's that?
We have, we have a motion on the floor in a second already.
The second has been withdrawn.
But we need to sign now.
I'll second it.
You made the motion, you can't second your own motion.
I'll second it, because I think either way, we need to know what's going on down there. Whether we sell it, you know, give it, well, not give it to a developer, but, you know, come up with a proposal from a developer to do something, or retain it as a park. Anything we do, we're going to need to know what's going on with that. We don't need the seawall to continue to fall into the river.
Just want to be absolutely clear. The city staff can, can secure and have the broken parts repaired. But the proposal, the motion is to engineer and replace the seawall on both sides completely.
The motion is to repair or replace. There's nothing about engineering. You can get, the seawall people to say, hey, it's going to cost so much to fix it, it's going to cost so much to replace it. Isn't that simple enough?
Would your motion include a riprap seawall, if that was appropriate?
No, no, no riprap. We're trying to get a natural flow.
I call the, call the question.
Roll call.
What is the motion at this point?
To replace us, to get, to get quotes to replace the seawall.
Or, or fix it.
Or repair it.
So to spend money with an engineering firm to tell us?
No, 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 no. Just, people want the business, they're going to make, they're going to make a proposal as to what it would cost.
Is that correct? So if people want to do it?
It, well, the issue will be if, if the, if the seawall needs to be engineered, or it needs permitting that requires engineering, then, then the bids won't be able to be completed. that requires engineering, then the bids won't be able to be completed.
So, we can't do it in a... And what... The mayor just said that it can't be that way.
I don't know the answer to that question, because I don't know whether we're replacing the entire thing or just repairing portions of it, until there's a scope.
They can make a... They can make a proposal to replace it or repair it.
Right, but if they need... If those seawall contractors need engineering, then we cannot approve it.
Well, that's their problem. That's their cost.
Right.
I mean, that's in their bid.
No, not... Under Florida law, we need to select the engineers. They can't. So, if they... It's not within their bid. They could only do it if it does not require engineering, and they can do the replacement under certain thresholds.
This will require engineering, yes? This is going to require engineering.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Could maybe John Dahmer from our community development department could answer, because he'd be issuing the permit.
And answer me this. Can we go out to bid without the engineering component? And because if that's... I think that's what the mayor wants, if I understand, going out to bid without that component. If that's not a reality, then...
Can I make a point? Can I make a real quick point? Yes, you can. Design-build. All you have to do is put in the RFP that whatever design they submit will have to be certified by an engineer, and they build that into their figure.
And then we pay for the engineer? They pay?
No, they pay for it, just like we did City Hall.
Okay.
Right engineer... Right construction. And people working for them.
So, good morning.
Good morning, John.
We've covered a lot of ground, and there's a lot of options on the table. The... A design-build that was just brought up is a separate process that's a different type of proposal that you would seek. If that's what you want to do, there are certain standards in place that would allow you to do a design-build contract. If we're looking at a question as to the expertise of a contractor, whether that repair only needs to be done on portions of the seawall, or if the entire seawall needs to be replaced, that's a separate question. And you're basically asking somebody for a design or a plan to make that a safe waterfront. If we're looking to have somebody provide engineering opinions on whether a certain option is more attractive, or is safer, or functions better from a certain perspective, that is yet a third path to go forward. So, I guess the question is, what is the question you're trying to answer? And I think that we started off, and I don't want to place words in anyone's mouth, but it sounds like we started off with a discussion that said, why don't we ask those that build docks a question as to whether this can be simply fixed, or if we need to replace this? And as part of that question, what is an estimate for that work? And if that's the question we're asking, then we can simply...
John, I think, more simply put, to do this work, would it require a permit from your department?
Yes, it would require a permit from our department, would also require a permit from DEP.
Would your permit require plans to be able to review?
Yes.
So, you would need an engineering firm to design them, whether you did it via design-build, and you're still paying for it, or whether you do it independently, as Derek spoke of?
So, now that we understand it differently, I'm not sure if everybody still feels the same, because now you're somewhat... With that clarification, what I'm understanding is, we don't go to this next phase without spending money from the engineering side of this, correct?
The only way you could do something different, similar to what the mayor suggested, is to use a design-build contract. You have a handful of design-build contracts on a pre-selected list. One of the contractors was mentioned, was Wright Construction. Another one that we've used for the downtown is Trytown. There's a handful of others that also are pre-selected. Or you could write an RFP and add another three to four months to select another set of design builders that specialize in this type of work, if they're out there.
And do you foresee that creating any issues with bamboo moving forward, Derek? Then during the selection process, if we're three or four months down the road with who we're going to select, and we select one of them, is this an issue?
I've had... I've talked to two different people that build seawalls, and one was $500 a foot, and one was $400 a foot. It was as simple as that. One proposed 1,100 square feet, 700 on one side, 400 on the other side, to replace at $400 a square feet. It's pretty simple. That's why I want other people to bid. That's simple.
And I think that... And once again, I don't want to put words in the contractor's mouth, but I think they were looking to replace like-for-like, meaning they wanted to place that seawall at the same elevation, same type of seawall, same type of cap. We're currently looking to revise some of our dock and shoreline code that would allow for that seawall to be replaced at a higher elevation, which would provide a little bit of additional protection, and that's coming forward in the next few months. That code revision would allow you a little bit more flexibility in terms of where that dock was placed. Because of the timing, I don't look at it as necessarily getting in the way, because as Matt has outlined, nobody's building anything without a plan, and that plan is not going to be put together any earlier than that. But that's just something for you to think about as we're going forward. The current elevation of that seawall is probably not doing the city any favors.
But, John, real quick, would a like-to-like replacement along the lines of the mayor's laid out still require engineering and permitting?
It would still require permitting by both us and the Department of Environmental Protection. Whether they look at it as a general permit or an individual permit is going to be the question of scope.
They could commit to so many dollars a foot, and how many feet they're going to do, and give us an idea of what we're looking at, and put it on the bill for anybody who wants to build in there or buy in there. They're going to... Somebody's going to fix that wall. And I think it's ought to be us, because I think it belongs to the people. The people have paid for the whole project. I think we ought to make it usable and safe. And this fencing and awful yellow tape, it looks like hell. Excuse me, but I think we ought to do something.
Call the question for the third time.
Repeat the motion.
I'm not sure what the motion is.
To put it out to bid to fix the wall or replace the wall, period. That's it. You've got... How many wall builders do we have in the area? I know two of them.
Well, that... Just to go... We would have to do a design-build in order to make it.
Why? Why?
Because we need permits, not just from the city, but from the state.
I'm not saying permits. I'm just saying, get an estimate from these professional wall builders as to what they think it would cost to do these two things, either one. Is that just so hard to comprehend, eh?
I understand.
That's the motion, just to contact two or three, or how many wall builders we can find that are willing to make a bid to replace or repair Imperial Crossing's seawall. Is that the motion?
All right. Do you want to roll call somebody?
Yes, please.
Do we have a second?
Oh, do we have a second?
I thought Mike seconded it.
We had a second.
Do we have a second?
We can just get a estimate?
I think what you're asking is for staff to follow the city's procurement process to provide bids for the wall, to either replace or repair.
I think that's what I want, yes.
We can't just contact individual folks. We'll have to prepare...
I mean, it's the staff's that's got to do it, you know?
We would have to prepare a document to send out.
Same we all have to realize is, unless the plans that would ultimately be submitted for us to accept have got an engineer's seal on them, the DEP won't approve it, so you're stuck. So, if you're going to have an engineer, whether you want it or not.
What we're trying to make clear is that, let's say that firms A, B, and C all build... They come in with pricing. All three of them will come back inevitably with the same conclusion, that they require an engineer to design the plans. So, they can give you a price based on someone's plans, but they won't have the plans in hand, so they'll only give you ranges. So, what we're saying is, there's an additional step that still has to be moved forward, unless we did a design-build, in which case, we could get one contractor who's going to do both.
Let's just go with the first. Just get the bids, and then we decide whether we're going to do something.
Okay.
That's the motion, just to have staff contact a number of seawall builders and get estimates.
To be clear, sir, we're just going to follow the city's procurement process to acquire bids for either replace or repair. We cannot individually select certain folks that we contact. We will properly follow the procurement process.
Whatever.
And we're going to have to pay the engineer in the back.
We've got to move forward on our second.
Could we vote?
Let's vote.
A vote again, please, for the fourth time. Call the vote. And who seconded that? I'm sorry.
I seconded the vote. I don't think it has... I don't know.
Did you second it, Mike?
I had seconded it.
Okay. Cool. Councilman Corey?
No.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Forbes? Councilwoman Corumba?
No.
Councilman Purdon?
No.
Councilwoman Carr?
No.
Motion fails.
What was the vote? Five, two?
Five, two. Motion fails. May I propose that we handle this at our workshop? When is our workshop scheduled, Arlene? Do we have a date?
We do not have the date yet, but it will be in June when we're back into the City Hall.
Okay. Let's do that as soon as possible, and an important item would be some discussion over what park area we want and the nature of it, so that we could go forward as a possibility to just explore doing the park area, okay? And that would include the effort along the water to see if we really... Where we might want to have the improvements and what kind.
Thank you, Amy. I think that's a good idea. We can do this in phases, we should get the park started.
Are you talking about carving out a piece of bamboo and then only going out to bid for the rest of it? Or are we saying, we're going to do the entire property?
We have yet to make a decision about anything.
We have yet to make a decision, but at least we could, in deference to the point that our mayor has proposed, we should at least focus on the public area, which is the one that's in the floodplain. No one's going to build anything there, anyway.
But it's part of the bigger picture, so we can't pick it apart. We've got to look at the whole thing.
No, we can't, but we at least can start with that.
No, I hear what you're saying, but we can start there, but the meeting doesn't end until we go to the entire project.
Correct. But let's put it on as a separate item in deference to our mayor. That's all I'm asking. And we need to talk in a workshop environment where we can have a dialogue. Otherwise, we're never going to get anywhere.
And Mayor and Council, we have placed some signage. We will be reviewing it again to make sure there's any additional signage that needs to be there, or any additional safety measures that need to be taken on the property.
Yeah, and before we have that workshop, maybe we can do it today, we need to come up with something that says, when we go around and we discuss, how many minutes do you go before you give up the floor for somebody else? Because you don't want somebody to monopolize a meeting. You want everybody to have a fair amount of time. Whatever the time is, whether it's four minutes, five minutes, whatever, some of us will talk shorter, but at least none will go beyond that before somebody else gets a chance to talk. And how many times are we going to go around the table?
We're going to have a facilitator, so that won't be an issue.
I'm going through a list of 13 facilitators that I've gotten. They have a range of experience, everything from professional mediators to project designers to lawyers, engineers. I'm looking for someone that has some level of understanding of what the issues are, so that they're not completely absent, but also someone who focuses on consensus-building and bringing things forward. And I'll work with Arlene to select that person. And what I suspect will happen is, we will come out with some ground rules ahead of the discussion, to make sure that each member of the council has an opportunity to get a position out, but then we have a little bit more of a free-flowing dialogue at that point to facilitate getting to a goal.
You might want to add MMA and UFC refs, too.
I am definitely pressure-testing each of the people.
And Mr. Attorney, how much is this going to cost the city?
I don't have an estimate for that.
It's going to cost us something, though, right?
Well, right now, it's costing us time, not moving forward with the consensus. So, yes, it will cost something.
Sure.
I'd like to know what it is before we hire anybody. We could talk this... We've been talking 15 years on this project. Okay, can we move along? We've got two people running for zoning board. We have ballots that have been distributed to each. I prefer a certified public accountant.
We do have a member here who's...
Excuse me?
I don't think we're...
I think we have a... We have to cast a vote somewhere.
Yeah.
Oh, I got it here. Okay.
One of the persons running is here, if we want to get her in.
I think the other one is president of a university, so she's not able to be here. But she knows her stuff. She's good. I think she's real good.
Is Robert Lombardo here? Would you like to introduce yourself? Tell me why you want to get into this mess.
Morning, everybody. My name is Bob Lombardo, officially Robert Lombardo, and just want to introduce myself. I appreciate the opportunity to be considered for the zoning board. I've been a resident here for, full-time, for 15, 16 years. I've owned property for over 30, and I consider Benita Springs my hometown, and I consider it an honor to be able to serve.
Well, thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Did we collect all the ballots yet? While they're counting them, we can move on to the next one. We have one person volunteering to join the local planning agency. Jeff, can we vote to accept his application?
Is he here?
Yes. So, we have to vote?
I don't think he's here.
Second.
Well, we'll move the other item after we get the votes, if you want to move forward on the LPA.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to accept?
The LPA?
For the LPA.
Councilman Corey?
Oh, A. Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
O, A, aye.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Linda Waterhouse received four votes, and Robert Lombardo, three.
All right, thank you, Debbie.
So, do we have to vote on that also?
Yes, vote to accept the results.
Okay. I've moved to accept the results.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Okay, now we've got Ashley Brown and company, our audit, come forward. Okay, now, we've got Ashley Brown and Company, our audit, come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, I'd like Lisa Robertson to come forward. She's going to introduce our auditors and provide you with the presentation. We do hope that you bear with us. There are some items that do need to be addressed in the public forum for us to meet our statute requirements.
Yes. Good morning, Lisa Robertson, Finance Director, City of Benita Springs. We wanted to introduce our independent auditor, who completed our audit as of our fiscal year ending 9/30. As we mentioned in the green sheet, we want to give a special thanks to Ann Wright, who just retired as our Finance Director, her and her team. We receive a reporting certificate of excellence each year, and you'll see one published in your book from this past year. Again, Ann and her team did that. We're applying for one this year. Again, we'll give thanks to Ann and her team. Jeff, the partner with the CPA firm, legally, he has to, by Florida statutes and his professional requirements for auditing, he has to hit certain points in the audit. So if y'all be patient with him, it may be a tad bit dry, but we'll get our legal requirements met.
Well, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Hey, welcome aboard.
Good morning. Good morning. It is a lengthy document there, so I will be brief. I'm just going to hit a couple high points in here. I believe in your packet, it starts around page 180 or so of the 500-ish. First thing in here is, if you haven't already, I encourage you to kind of read through or keep as a reference, the management's discussion and analysis. It's a nice overview of the financial highlights for the year. It's kind of, it's comparative. It's in a narrative format. It's got some graphs in there. It kind of presents both the fiscal year 2020 as well as the 19 information. The first thing in here is on the number at the bottom of the document is page two of our independent auditor's report, and the very last paragraph on that page states that "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the governmental activities." In English, what that is, is what we call a clean and unmodified, unqualified opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that you receive from a CPA firm, and it basically means that, as Lisa mentioned, the financial statements, as they were prepared by your staff, are in accordance with governmental accounting standards, Florida statutes, rules of the Auditor General, in compliance. There was no issues with the numbers as they were, so we appreciate their efforts as well. There's also a section about 90 pages back from where they begin. This is what is referred to as the single audit. This is required when you expend federal or state dollars. There's a couple sections in here, back in parts one and two, but the point of me bringing it up is that there's no internal control deficiencies, no audit findings that are required to be reported to any governmental agencies, so you're in good shape there. There's additional report in here, back on page 96 of the actual CAFER, we call it, is our letter to you, with a management letter. There's references in here to Florida statutes, rules of the Auditor General, again, addressing the fact that there were no prior audit findings. The city is in a sound financial condition and position, and that we had no formal recommendations as far as improvements or changes or anything to internal control, financial reporting. There's an additional report on your internal control over financial reporting, and there's, again, two positive statements in here that say that during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control, that we consider it to be material weaknesses, and another positive statement, "The results of our tests disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards." And that's about it. So with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have. I didn't want to go over the numbers because, again, it's September 30th, 2020 data, so anyway. You're in compliance, everything, it's a good, clean report.
And this report is so late because of COVID, or is this normal?
It's a little late. It's, the certificate that Lisa referenced that you're going to be applying for is, the CAFERS are usually due within six months of the year-end, so March 31st is typical, but with COVID and everything, yes, it got delayed out another month after that.
Very good. It's going to be good.
Yes, sir.
I'll add that legally, they have, we have nine months to do one, so they're still a little bit early on the statute.
Very good.
And what I would recommend is, even though this is a presentation, I would recommend a formal vote accepting the financial report. It's not a requirement of law that there's a vote, but it is filed with us, so just that formality, I think, would be helpful.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any more comments? Roll call, please, Debbie.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Did you get Jesse?
Aye.
Councilman.
All right, we're good. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, now, we have Dr. L. Donald Duke, PhD.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, if Dr. Duke would come forward, he does have the reporting guidelines to give us on the report that we most recently received.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Don Duke. I'm a professor of environmental studies at Florida Gulf Coast University, and I've been asked to make a quick presentation of the work that we've done for the past year and a half or so, looking at bacteria in two water bodies in the community, Spring Creek and the Imperial River. We've submitted our report, so that's available to you in some detail. I thought that I would hit just some highlights today. I did prepare some slides. I don't know if we want to work from the slides or how we'd like to do that. Okay? If I look over my shoulder, you'll see my profile on the screen. I certainly have enough slides that we could go for a long time on this, but I will hit some highlights and skip over some of the slides. And do I have the controller, or does someone else? This will do it, huh? No, it's going to do it. There it is. All right, thank you. I'd like to start with this one, which is way too small to see. This is just the cover page of the report, nothing fancy about it, but I'd like to mention that the dozen names on here, well, we have the three lead investigators. Those are faculty at FGCU. The other names are all students who worked on this with us. We had 12 students who got some firsthand experience in the field and analyzing data and helping to write the report. That's the kind of things that we get when we have a university-led project. I'll just move through that, and I'll move through my brief outline also. The pollutant we're looking at here is known as fecal indicator bacteria. The issue is fecal material in our waters is a bad thing. How's that for a really simple thing that we can all agree with? The regulatory requirements are for two indicator bacteria, and the reason I like to make that point is indicator bacteria are not the things that cause disease. We have these two Latin names, enterococcus and E. coli. Those are things that are easily measured in the environment. We consider them indicators because if they're present, it's possible that present in the environment also could be things that cause disease. 100 years or so ago, the terrible things in our waters included cholera, typhoid fever. We don't expect to see those, but measuring for these indicators is a way that we make sure that we don't see the really bad actors like that. What we have instead is hundreds, maybe thousands, of organisms that could cause diseases of the kind that's, oh, minor gastrointestinal illnesses, stomach aches, headaches, things of that nature, but we monitor these to make sure we don't see the really bad diseases recur also. So why am I giving you a science lesson here? I really don't mean to. What I mean to say is, the things that are regulated are substances that do not cause disease, that we think will be useful indicators for some things that do. Now, I say all of that because the point is, we don't expect to get to zero of these substances in the environment, and there's a really key reason for that that's embedded in your report. That is, the organisms that live in human intestines that would indicate presence of those pathogens also live in the intestines of any other warm-blooded animal, birds, bats, rodents, the sorts of things we do want in our water bodies. So we don't expect to get to zero of any of these things, which is really different from what we're used to thinking of as pollutants, right? You want zero lead in your water. You want zero toxic substances. We don't expect zero of these things in our natural waters. We don't kill all the bacteria in our natural waters because, you know, that's, we expect those organisms to live there. We enjoy the fish and the alligators, and those are cold-blooded, don't contribute to these, but the microorganisms. If we, I tell my classes at school, if we wanted to kill all these bacteria, we call that a swimming pool, and that's not what we want from Imperial River and Spring Creek. Okay, there's the background issue. Number one, we don't expect to get to zero of these. Number two, they're highly variable, even highly episodic. So sometimes I'm asked the question, how's the river doing? How's this river compared to other rivers? The short, almost flippant answer is, depends on the day and on what river mile you're looking at, because they vary that much. So my point is, so this sets up all the data that we can look at in as little or as much detail as you'd like, to point out that what we look at is for frequency of high numbers, not an average, not even how high they are, but the frequency with which they'll exceed standards. So all that is backup to some of the graphs that we have in here, which, as I said, we can spend as much or as little time as we might like, and we'll just move forward. I have a couple of photos of us in the field. We did two kinds of sampling. We call the one run over the river. This is about a four-mile stretch of each of the two water bodies, that on a given day, we took multiple samples, 10 samples on each water body. That's one way to characterize the river, how it changes from place to place on that day. And the other, we called fixed site, where we did more frequently, but only at one location on each of the two water bodies. So setting it up, a quick map to show where we took these samples. This first one is Spring Creek, right? The red circle here is a place where Lee County also does some sampling, so that figures in the coming slide, but just so, just very quickly, these are the locations on Spring Creek. These are the locations on Imperial River. We can document those in detail, but exactly where, we had our reasons for choosing those. Here's the first slide of data. What I'd ask you to take from this slide is the upper one, this is Spring Creek for enterococci, one of the two substances we're talking about, sorry, organisms we're talking about. The upper one is what we considered upstream, which is at Old Route 41. By up and down, I know that these rivers run both directions depending on the tide, but upstream, I just mean further from the Gulf. The bottom graph on this page is the downstream location, which is, Lee County calls it Pelican Landing. It's our site, it's the one that I had circled on that previous graph. Okay, the point from this slide is, remember I talked about number of exceedances? On the upper graph here, you see fewer of those than on the lower graph. The scientific take-home from that is, as our water bodies move through the urbanized areas, we get more and more of these bacteria. That's pretty straightforward, right? What we take from that is, it's documentation that human activities are a cause of these bacteria in the environment. We know we have birds and bats and rodents and other things in these waters, but if you get more and more of it, the more humans you get, that's some evidence that human activities are indeed a source of this problem. The other thing we can notice from this, the dashed line, can we see the dashed line on that slide? It doesn't show up on mine either, is very near the bottom of these graphs, so exceeding routinely. Now, the regulation says it's, the water body's out of compliance if it exceeds more than 10% of the time, and it doesn't matter how high. So the top end of this graph, exactly how high it goes isn't the issue. It's how many times, but this is exceeding something like, oh, 30, 40, 50% of the time, depending on where in the river. So that's the other documentation that, and this is Lee County data, this is, did I mention that? These are not the data we collected, but this is the previous five years that Lee County collected. In all of these locations, except one, and I forget which one, for both of these substances, they're in exceedance, okay? And that's just a quick look at previous data before we got to our data, and I have a summary, quantitative summary on the tables here for support at your convenience. The box here points out the point that I just made. You see the number of exceedances upstream, that's the left-hand column in my box, 15 total exceedances over those five years. The downstream end, 40 total exceedances. So this is just counting points from those maps that I just showed you. Okay, so the table has lots more in it that we could dig into if we wanted a whole science lesson, but I think we don't. Yes?
Real quick question. For those who are familiar with the Imperial, if you're going up and down it, you know there's the bridge past downtown, just past downtown, and it has probably more bats than you'll ever see anywhere, right? It's like the largest bat population we have in Benita, probably, over there. So anytime you go under there, you can smell the guano, you know there's a lot there, and I just wonder, as far as the measuring went for the Imperial, where you were in relation to that, and if you think that played into the high levels.
Mm-hmm. We noticed some bat population further downstream at Route 41 Bridge also. The short answer is, because we were doing these samples by boat, we couldn't get further than about Route 41.
Oh.
Oh, sorry, Old Route 41. We went as far up as Old Route 41. There's a limitation to the way we do these in the field because you only have six hours to get the sample to the lab, so we can't do the whole river. It's why we ended up with just the four-mile limit, but, so we did not go as far upstream as that. You know, that could be a future study. We'd have to wade in from the banks rather than do it by a boat, but we did investigate bats because Mr. Feeney suggested that we consider that, and we did it at that Route 41 Bridge.
It's actually the one up, it's up from that, but still, you're in the right area.
He's referring to Spring Creek Route 41 Bridge. You're referring to the Matheson Bat Bridge, but they both have bat colonies.
The Bat Bridge.
And bats as warm-blooded animals, absolutely, yes, they have some, they contribute some of the same indicators, but of course, they don't contribute to pathogens, so that's why, you're right, that it's important to try to draw that distinction. We have some evidence to address that, but it's a hard question to address.
No, thank you.
I've got a question. Do fish don't poop in the water, or?
Certainly, they do.
How come we don't?
We're well aware of that.
We're not, we're ignoring that, is, or?
Fish are cold-blooded organisms, and so they don't excrete the same bacteria as humans, so certainly there are bacteria that come from fish. They do not carry pathogens. Fish don't transmit cholera and other diseases that live in the human intestine, and they also don't confound our reading of human sources because their intestinal bacteria populations are entirely different.
Thank you. Thank you.
On the readings, the high readings you got, how much higher would you have to go to cause, be worried about cholera and some of those nasty things?
The...
Double, triple, quadruple?
The devilish problem with this indicator is, how high it goes doesn't have any relation to the likelihood of these serious problems. It's, in fact, it was developed for drinking water, where you want zero bacteria, right? I make a joke about swimming pools, but also drinking water is something we disinfect. You want zero. So presence of any of these in drinking water, that's a red flag. That's send out the boil notices, you know, the sorts of things that we see after some disasters. So presence of cholera could be indicated if there are any of these bacteria. It's not a matter of if you get higher, then it's more of a problem. It's not even about intensity of the disease. If we think about pollutants like lead or something, the more of it you ingest, the worse you are. That's not the case with these indicators. It's fuzzy in a lot of ways, and there are reasons that that's kind of the best science we have, so I tend to waffle, and I sound as if I'm waffling when I answer that, but that's the best science is. How do we know if there is cholera or the other really bad things present? You know, I just thought of about five different answers, and I rejected all of them. We treat our wastewater, okay, including in septic systems and in centralized treatment. We treat our wastewater, and that is what we use to destroy cholera and other things before it enters the water body, right? So we do a good job at treating our wastewater to deal with those really bad actors, but as I said, the hundreds or thousands of other organisms, we don't manage to destroy all of them, so that's why the problems here, earaches, stomach ache, we hope that those are the worst things that happen. We know of outbreaks of the really bad problems in a few rare cases in a few places in the country. Typically, we wouldn't expect to be looking for that here.
Sir, what is, I heard the Imperial River is impaired. What does that mean?
Impaired is a regulatory term. It means it exceeds the standard specified by the State of Florida under directions from U.S. EPA. So impaired means it does not meet water quality standards. So the water quality standard is the dashed line I have here. If it exceeds that number, it's not up, if it exceeds that number more than 10% of the time, then it meets the regulatory definition of impaired.
Is there any way to correct that, or make it better, or?
It's...
Impossible?
There are regulations that will require you to take some action. It's called the TMDL program, but it's not specifically, it's not like a factory that's told, fix this today or shut down. The watershed approach under this, the so-called TMDL program, requires multiple municipalities to work together and partnership with the state. There is a process for this, but exactly where, I'm not sure exactly where the city stands on TMDL process.
We have horses and cows, and they all contribute, right?
They do. And so that's why, as a standard, among those of us who study these things, the standard for bacteria is a little controversial. We'd like to pick a standard that protects our health, but the substance we have that's the best indicator of that doesn't really link as perfectly to health as we might like. You know, you don't get to contest the EPA on those grounds. I don't like your standard. EPA works very hard to develop... EPA works very hard to develop standards, and it's an imperfect one. So, you're right, the horses and cows, which are known to eliminate in water bodies, absolutely would potentially be a reason that we see these high numbers. We have some other evidence further in the program where we tried to distinguish human from other animals, and that too is an imperfect science. We have all those things going on.
Any other questions? Now, how about the septic tank system? We're talking about getting rid of MRA, a big contributor to our rivers and...
Our evidence that shows presence of these organisms, and some of the other evidence in the report that attempts to distinguish human from animal, shows that there is human waste in the water bodies. And if there's a yuck factor in that, sorry for that, but it doesn't show amounts, it doesn't show diseases. So, I am answering your question honest. Septic systems can contribute. If they are well-maintained and well-positioned, then we expect that the human waste is treated, I use that word intentionally, we assume that the soils treat that waste before it gets to the water body. Some of the indicators we have will indicate whether there is waste treated or untreated. If you look at the report, we talk about sucralose. Sucralose is an artificial sweetener. It's believed to be an effective tracer for presence of human waste, because, face it, birds don't drink Diet Coke, right? So, if there's presence of an artificial sweetener, we take that as an evidence that there's human waste. But the trick is, treated human waste will remove all the pathogens, doesn't remove the sucralose. So, we found sucralose in these water bodies, much more of it, in fact, in Spring Creek than Imperial River. That indicates that there is waste entering that river, but if it is treated waste, it doesn't have any of these disease organisms. The sucralose, you can't get rid of that stuff. It persists, you know, it's one of those thousand-year molecules, the treatment doesn't destroy it. Treatment destroys our diseases, and so, that's good. Presence of sucralose means there's human waste. That absolutely will originate with septic systems.
Question.
But that doesn't indicate whether the septic systems are working properly or failing, that's a much bigger study.
Question.
Yes.
Down here, during the wet season, an awful lot of times, we have the superficial aquifer almost at ground level. Now, how can a septic tank work correctly, the leaching field in the earth, if the water level is above the leaching field?
Mm-hmm.
It would seem to me that that would almost mess things up.
It's an excellent question, and one we should look for an answer to, but it's way beyond my field of expertise. So, you are correct that wet season, things work differently, and the people who design and build septic systems and maintain them will claim that they will function wonderfully well under any circumstances if they're well-operated, and I don't know the answer to that.
How can you well-operate a septic system?
Well, by operated, I just mean keep it in good repair. A septic tank, after time, will develop cracks or leaks, and that's not well-operated. So, operate maybe wasn't the right term, well-maintained would be a better term.
What about the thousands and thousands of feet, probably miles, of vitrified clay pipe that's being used to transport sewage to a septic tank or from a house to a package plant?
Potential leaks in conveyance pipes and failing septic systems are the two usual routes by which human bacteria can enter the environment. If the pipes are well-maintained and there are no cracks, then we assume that there's zero or next to zero leakage, but especially in older systems, you know, older parts of the US sewage pipes routinely leak, and that's a source of a problem there. I don't know a lot about the distribution system in Benita Springs. Mr. Feeney assures me that it's in terrific shape, and I have no reason to doubt that.
We have a lot of vitrified clay pipe.
We can't really speak to that. Benita Springs Utilities did a sewer expansion starting in 1992, so the main transmission lines, you know, basically date back to 1992. I have no knowledge of, you know, collection systems, of existing systems. I think that'd be a question for Benita Springs Utilities.
Information from BSU.
The only other sizable source of human waste in some locations is places where you have large homeless populations, you know, parts of, some of our big cities that have that problem. It can enter in that way. I don't have any reason to believe that's an issue here either. But, routine activities by humans, things that run off of our yards, can generate these loads of E. coli enterococcus, and those are the things that the regulations requires us to address. So, that includes many things. It certainly includes the septic systems, which do load the soil with these bacteria. We expect those bacteria to be digested in the soils, but heavy groundwater flows, high water tables, certainly conditions of flooding. After a flood episode, we have upsets in the septic systems of various kinds, can generate loads of these, either very small ones or sizable ones. And even very small leaks or loads can be enough to trigger a violation of these standards. One other thing I wanted to point out, I actually carried a prop with me today. The standard is for 100, on the order of 100 or a few hundred organisms per 100 milliliters. Okay? So, if you've seen an image of a drop of pond water under a microscope, you can find 100 living organisms in a drop of water. If, in 100 milliliters, which is about the size of this saline spray I happened to find on my counter this morning, that's about 100 milli, actually, this is 88, so 100 milliliters are sample bottles, are just a bit bigger than this. So, imagine 100 microscopic organisms in here, that's very, very small, right? Out of the millions of microorganisms, if more than 100 of those are enterococcus, then you're in violation. This can be a really small amount, is what I mean to say. It can be stirred up. We know that some of these things live in the sediments. If a kayaker sticks a paddle in the mud, you might get a high reading that day. It's that kind of episodic nature. It doesn't get into the mud unless it comes from a septic system or a leaking pipe or improper discharge, but they can persist in the mud a little bit. It's very, very patchy, very clumpy, in a real sense. When a bird drops into the river, well, we know enough not to sample right there, you can spot that, but you can't spot a bird dropping that happened 100 yards upstream that happens to flow by. That's why all the data that you see in these tables is so up and down. The issue is, the birds are there roughly the same amount over time, so over the course of the five years of data that I showed, we'll get a few high readings from that. That's why the regulation says don't proceed more than 10% of the time. If you're exceeding a lot, and exceeding, remember, 10, or sorry, 100 organisms in about this much volume is exceeding, we think that that is human origin. Because there's so much variability, and we were asked to do a preliminary study, so we did only three times, went up and down each of these rivers, plus another four times, we did the, what we called fixed site. That was just at one site, at the Route 41 Bridges, in fact, on both water bodies, for a quick snapshot. So, we don't have a real good understanding of just how it varies. We would need more of that to make a plan for how to reduce it, and that might be your next step. We have some understanding now, enough to know that there's a problem there. How to solve it, we'll take some further investigations.
Is it a good idea to clean up after your dog?
That matters.
It matters a lot, it sounds like to me.
Yes. The dogs don't normally use a stream the way cattle and horses often do, but yeah, the dog waste in someone's backyard after a rainfall, that will certainly wash into the river and absolutely will affect these numbers, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anymore?
Anything further? The report runs to about 80 pages. The presentation I prepared for today runs to 30 slides or so. In other words, there's much more we could talk about if anyone has questions at this time or another time.
One last question. In your best judgment, how many months would it take you to pin down where a major amount of stuff is coming from, in different areas?
I'm not sure I heard. How many months would it take to come into compliance, you mean?
No.
No, okay.
To determine where the real problem parts are.
Mm-hmm.
Like a community.
We feel like we got a good start at understanding the problem. My next study would be more focused, you know, we'd pick a few places and we'd do it, we'd try to control for things like tides and precipitation. I can't control for which dog drops in which yard, but we can control for things like where the water's moving. So, our next study that would narrow it down further would be probably one wet season and one dry season. So, you know, the wet season that should start any day now, depending on when it starts to rain, that'd be about three months, and then in dry season, another three or four months would give us our next piece of information. I hope you won't ask me to guarantee exactly what I would know after that, because it's too hard to guarantee these things, but that would be a really important next step forward, would be a study of one more wet and one more dry season. We know enough now that we're a little smarter about the river than we were when we started this in fall of 2019, and we've begun to narrow some things down. The answer to the bat question, by the way, was, we can do some DNA sequencing, which is tricky, because you're actually sequencing the bacteria, not the human or the bat. And it appears that there's an elevated, well, also, it happens that the microorganisms that live in bat intestines are really similar to birds. We know bats and birds are very different, but their intestinal tracts, not so much. I didn't know that before either. The Route 41 Bridge over Spring Creek, which clearly has bat and maybe bird colonies, there appears to be more avian slash bat bacteria there than elsewhere on the water body. It also, though, with the numbers that we have, whatever variations that's causing seems to be smaller than all the other variations we see. There are times when that's a little higher than other parts of the river, there are times when other parts of the river are even higher. So, the contribution by the bat colony appears to be present, but there's so many other things going on that it kind of swamps out the effect of that. That's the short answer to it. There's a longer answer in the report, but that's kind of what we learned about that.
Well, you expect more bacteria in the dry season than you would in the wet season, because there's more water or less water?
We definitely expected that, but did not find it. We thought there'd be an important difference between wet and dry season. Now, maybe it's because we didn't have enough samples, but in Imperial River, one of the three times, it was high, and it happened to be a dry season one, but the other dry season was very, very low. So, other things besides wet and dry season appear to make an even bigger difference. It's not that, you know, all the wetter up here and all the drier down here, or vice versa. They vary it for a lot of reasons.
Thank you. Well, we were going to put a 10-minute limit on you, I think we're, we might be over that.
Oh, I think I might have exceeded.
That's very interesting. I enjoyed the conversation. Any other questions? Jesse?
Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
And Dr. Duke has a continues of that PowerPoint. We'll distribute that to the rest of City Council, and if there's any questions, follow-up questions after that, we'll be happy to reply that back to you all.
Is staff going to recommend what we do next?
I think it was an update.
I think the general conclusion of Dr. Duke's report is that there's still some questions that need to be answered. We've been looking into understanding the effects of tide, which is really kind of beyond, I think, what the university would be able to do, and we'll be budgeting some dollars for council if you want to continue to look further into it.
Well, my, the reason my question is, if we don't let some of this go right away, we're going to be well past the wet season before they start, so that means it would have to do next year's wet season to get that.
I have a few comments, Mayor.
Yes, Amy.
I did spend quite a bit of time on the report and looked at all the, and it was, you know, exhaustive work, but my kind of overall feeling about it was that there are a lot more questions and uncertainties than answers. And even some of the findings about the increase in higher incidence as you go down the river is not totally supported by some of the diagrams that are shown. So, I, and I think that we may, if we have some concern about this, and we may or may not have concern about it, one of the things that Dr. Duke said today was very helpful to me, because he said that the findings of sucralose, which I thought was most definitive, could just mean that there is some treated waste that's coming into the water, which I'm not quite sure how that could happen, would, it would not be a problem if that were the case. So, I think we're, I would like to explore a little further, because it is my understanding that we have removed sewer septic systems all along both those rivers, and if we have some there, we know where they are. And I can think of one community that has them, but they're far removed from the watershed. And from what I know, from the conversations I had with, I guess, civil engineers, is that distance from septic systems is important. But the point is, is that if we really want to go further with this, I think we should start with Benita Springs Utilities. We ought to have a report on where the septic systems are along these two waterways. We ought to ask the question of, have the piping systems ever been examined? We have four mains all over the city, and I just would like to know whether there's any been, any effort to determine whether they're functioning at a proper level or not. Because if indeed we do not have septic systems along these waterways, I don't see how we could solve this problem if there is a problem. I'm not 100% there is a problem. And I recommend that you do read the 76 pages, because the technical implications and the conclusions are important. These are indicators, they're not measures of fecal material. And in my view, in reading the various approaches that were done, is the sucralose finding is the most important one. So, I'd like to understand that better. So, I mean, I think we're, we need to have an outside look at this, rather than examining the results if there is a result here. That's my opinion.
Yes, Jesse.
And I would say on a more holistic city level, you know, I mean, this kind of gives credence to the thought process that I had earlier in the year when we kind of had the disagreement on the new development we allowed to put in the septic tanks. I think from a policy standpoint, you know, I'll say what I said back then, I think from a policy standpoint, we need to consider not having septic as part of new development period, because it sets the precedent that it's going to continue. But I'm not saying just on Old 41, because a lot of these city, a lot of areas in the city are directly in the watershed. So, you don't have to be right on the water to be problematic. So, I would reissue the statement I said back then, and I think maybe we come back for consideration on the idea that we don't approve septic in new development. Or, I mean, there's not too many more places to build, and if they can't afford to get on the sewer line, well, then they can't afford to do business here. So, I don't think we can bargain on our environment for that type of thing. So, I'll probably come back to you guys with something, but I just wanted, you know, reading this reiterated my focus that we just really need to proactively do something to make sure that we're not compounding the problem.
Yes, Jesse, I agree with that.
I think we already have that policy.
As far as if you're going to build a house, you ought to be on a sewer system. Now, you're talking big money when you run a sewer system out to DR, GR, that type of thing. But, if we're going to get rid of a septic system, then I guess we have to get rid of it somehow in the future. I understand some people put bacteria in their septic tanks to make them work better or something, but it's an old, it's an old, it's an old technique, and I guess, you know, people are grandfathered in or whatever. Thanks for the comment, Jesse. Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, the point was made that septic tanks that aren't beside a river are not a problem. If the septic tank is within a reasonably close distance to a drainage well, and we get into the wet season, the water table goes up, that water with septic effluent in it goes right into the swell, and the swell, by fast motion, takes it to this creek or the river. So, that's the one statement I wanted to clarify. I agree with Jesse.
Amy, the only question I have is, why would the Benita Springs Utilities know where the septic tanks are?
Because they're interested.
Because they're interested in converting them to the centralized sewer. I believe they know where they all are, or they tell us they know where they all are.
I've heard that.
They may. I'm just curious whether.
Well, I don't know. I think because it's their business to know, because they are interested in converting them to centralized sewer.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And I think, I would like to have, I mean, I've been, I've heard that we don't, you know, according to a certain distance, I don't know if it's a quarter of a mile, I've forgotten what the data is, but there is some convention that if your septic system is more than a certain distance from the waterway, according to engineering science, it should not be a problem. But I agree with what Fred just said. So maybe with the focus of these areas where we do have historic septic systems, we should analyze if they, how close they are to the drainage ditches which might end up into our waters. That's a good point. But I, you know, maybe with our water, stormwater management model that we have, we might be aware of that. So that might be a way that we could manipulate the model that we have to see where there might be a problem. I think if, that's where we should start, because that's where we're going to have to end up anyway. And it may, it's a lot easier for us to do something like that because ours, it's not like the Astero River where they reportedly have 1,000 septic systems along that Astero River. That's not, that's like a no-brainer, just get rid of them, you know? We don't have that issue. I don't believe we have it. If we do, I want to know about it because I've been told we don't have it.
Well, we just approved the development that has septic systems. Remember that?
Yes, it was a big fight. It was the one over on, it's somewhere on Old 41 by the Collier Line, but bottom line, it was by the watershed, and they wanted more time. They initially, it's like a warehouse unit, then they had, they needed more time, and then they're, after they get their next phase, they're going to connect. My issue was that I just didn't like the precedent of saying, all right, move forward until you're connected. I mean, in my opinion, you connect in the beginning, and if you can connect, then you move forward.
But it was replaced.
That was, that was one project, but there was another one that...
Morton Grove.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
But that was grandfathered.
That was about 50 units new, I think. But also BSU has got a conversion design for all the septic tanks out of Morton Grove, about 150 units, and it's, they're all close to drainage wells, and they all go to the Imperial River.
And also, our legislative action had asked to have state financing support for conversions. I mean, and we also had supported an effort to do testing of septic systems. So we have done some work in this area, but I want to, I would like to get a report to make sure that what I've been told verbally is correct, and that my understanding of how the science work is also the correct one. But, you know, if we have a problem, I think we should fix it. I think that's what the sense of what I've been hearing, but it's just a matter of what's the best way to do that. So I, for one, would like more information. I could do it privately, but that's what, that's where I'm going.
We also have 500 million bucks that's going to be available this fiscal year coming up for septic tank conversion.
For septic conversion? What did you say?
Septic tank conversion.
So I mean, it's there.
And that thing about the drainage wells, that is in the DEP manual that talks about how you convert, calculate pounds per septic tank that you take out of the system. So many feet from a river, a creek, or a drainage swale.
Okay, so we need to approve Dr. Duke's presentation. I appreciate it. It's very informative. Any other questions? Move on to 10A, City Attorney.
This is a second reading in public hearing on an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Chapter 3, Development Standards, Chapter 4, Zoning, Chapter 5, Historic Preservation, Chapter 6, Signs, to address internal inconsistencies and clarify standards as a result of the adoption of the Downtown Form Base Code for the Downtown District, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, and modifications that may arise from considerations of the public hearing and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Questions?
And you just have to open up the public comment.
Public comment?
Thanks, Mike.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
11B, sir.
Okay, this is a second reading in public ordinance, public hearing on an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the City of Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, Zoning, to clarify language for the properties zoned plan development that would voluntarily develop or redevelop under the Benita Beach Road Corridor Overlay District Standards, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, and modifications that may arise from the consideration of the public hearing and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Thanks, Jackie. Thank you, Jackie.
Public comment? Roll call, please.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Okay, number C. This is Rick's Law. This is Rick's Law. Rick's right.
Second reading of public hearing of the following public ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the Benita Springs City Code, Chapter 34, Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Article 2, Uses of Rights-of-Way Relating to Dangerous Use of Rights-of-Way Providing for the Prohibition of Stopping or Standing in a Median That Is Not Sufficient for Pedestrian Refuge Providing for a Prohibition of Physical Interaction Between a Pedestrian and an Occupant of a Motor Vehicle That is Not Legally Parked Providing for Enforcement Providing for Conflicts of Law Severability Codification Scrivener's Errors and Modifications That May Arise from Consideration of the Public Hearing and an Effective Date.
Motion to approve.
This is a mirror of Lee County's ordinance.
It is, it is a mirror in all the important details. There are a few tweaks specific to Benita Springs because our code does not mirror Lee County's exactly.
Okay, and we have contacted the fire department, and they are not... Audrey, Arlene, please.
Correct. We have been in contact with Chief DeWitt as well as Captain Blakely, and coordinated the efforts of this ordinance.
Okay, I move, move to motion.
Second.
Second.
Any public comment?
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, City Attorney's Report. Back to you.
I only have two comments. The first one is, I just want to clarify with respect to Councilman Carr's discussion during her vote earlier. Just as a technical matter, because I know there was some confusion, both Councilman Carr and the mayor are correct. Irrespective, our voting rules actually provide that a comment can be made after a vote, but it should be made after the vote, not before the vote. So you were both technically correct. I just want to make sure that...
About during the vote.
During the vote. So after you say aye or nay, or you abstain, you can make a brief statement of clarification. That is provided by your rules, but not prior to the vote itself.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to make that add. And then the other, the only other thing I had is a distribution item. I believe it's on, in April, you approved the draft language of a settlement agreement with the Bayside and Bay Creek CDDs. That language did go to their board. They asked for a few tweaks in the language. I have worked with Mr. Feeney and the attorney for the two CDDs, and we have clarified those changes, that changes are, in my estimation, not material to the city. It has not been approved by their board. It will be going later this month for approval. I just wanted to make sure that you had a copy of the latest draft.
Thank you.
Assuming, assuming it's approved at their, their meeting, the case will be dismissed by the end of the month.
Thank you, Derek.
Do we have a vote on this? No.
You've already approved it. I just wanted you to have the distribution to know what was going on.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. City Manager.
Can we take a break?
Sure.
Five, 10 minutes to...
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, I'd like Lisa Roberson to come forward. She's going to give you a brief presentation on the city's financial report.
For the record, Lisa Roberson, Finance Director. You have before you in your packet our monthly financial report, which follows the same format that you've had previously. We decided this time to highlight our city revenues and specifically look at several of our more significant revenues and kick off for our budget. We'll be heading to our budget hearings in July, and then in September, we wanted to briefly cover where we are at six months into the year on those, as well as letting you know when we'll be receiving revenue estimates. Look forward to our next year. So the data that you have in the presentation is actually the charts. I apologize, they're small here, but this is exactly what you have in your, your written, your written report. It also shows, it shows a comparison of where we are this year, year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date, six months, as compared to last year, and also as compared to budget. Our first chart takes a look at city revenue as a whole. I think it's significant to note that we are ahead of last fiscal year at this time, which is a positive thing. Also, it's good for you all to note that we are only, most of our revenues are only at five months of collections, and that's consistent with each fiscal year, and it's because when, when people remit money, say, to the tax collector or pay for gas tax or sales tax that goes to the state or some other entity, it's actually the next month with which we receive it. And those are a lot of our significant revenue sources come in a month later. Again, it's consistent, so at the end of the year, we capture that next, any data that belongs to the prior year. For the general fund revenue, which is actually listed first there, it's unrestricted revenue, and we have, we have only at six months of operations. We're at about 70% of collections, which is good news. When we talk about citywide revenue, I think it's always very important to distinguish unrestricted revenue and restricted revenue and review what those are. Unrestricted revenue is what the, what the city can use at its discretion to fund programs and obligations, and that's as compared to restricted revenue. Restricted revenue is restricted as to the use, and that's outlined in the enabling legislation. For example, gas tax, road impact fees, impact fees, a lot of those are Florida statutes dictate exactly how you can spend them. The city, just like other municipalities, when we get a new project or a new program in, we look to try to fund it with restricted first and then save the unrestricted. Again, for lack of a better term, I think your unrestricted is very powerful, and it gives you the ability to meet the needs that you have at the local level without regards to use. Ad valorem revenue. Our taxable value last year went up a little over 4%. Great news. We're going to be getting our new estimate from the property appraiser June 1. And also, we wanted to highlight the fact that our ad valorem revenue provides funding not only for general operations, but also for our downtown redevelopment debt service. And those revenues are unrestricted. Most of your general fund revenues will be unrestricted by nature. Communication services tax. As you see here, we're a little behind last year. Not a lot, not anything we need to take significant note of. We will watch that. It is, I really like to note that our CST tax rate is 3.61. That is one of the lowest in Lee County. We are tied for the lowest with unincorporated Lee County and the Village of Astero. I think that's a good news piece. We did want to call to y'all's attention that if we'd like to continue this rate, we would need to review it July 2022 so that it would continue to be effective after July 2023. So what that tells you, there are a couple rate changes that could occur in some of your significant revenues. We want to give y'all a timeline of that. It will not affect this next fiscal year, but, you know, when we look at it July 2022, both of them, we'll need to take action in order to maintain those rates. Again, we look to council to give us your direction on that. The state provides our communication services tax, and they'll provide our revenue in August for next fiscal year. Franchise fees, our collections are pretty much in line with last fiscal year. Another good news. For our electric franchise, we have a collection rate of 4%. And again, we wanted y'all to note that in order for that 4% rate to continue, July 2022, we would need to review that in order for it to be effective after December 22, 2022. For franchise fees, we base that on our next year's budget. We'll base it on historical collections as well as economic trends and any data that we receive from our biggest providers, FPNL. So we look to them to give us some guidance with respect to their usage and what we can expect for our fees that we collect. State shared revenue. This is based upon collections at the state level. The revenue sharing, which are the couple, the first two pieces listed there, there's a portion that's sales tax and a portion that's fuel tax, that is actually collected by the state and put into municipal revenue sharing fund. During the fiscal year, we receive a budgeted amount for that fund, and then at the end of the year, the state actually, for lack of a better term, trues it up because they compare collections to what they've actually remitted to the municipalities, and usually at the end of the year, we do get an additional amount. They're pretty good about, their economists are pretty good about allocating that fund. The next line item there, half-cent sales tax, that is one of our most exciting revenues. It really is tied so much to what's happening in our economy, our local economy, our state economy, and to see, you can see it's a significant amount above last year. I mean, I think that's just such a positive note. And again, this is a state-provided revenue stream, so they will provide our estimate in August. Our local option gas tax, if you look at this slide, you actually see a slight decrease. Again, not significant, probably not something we have to really concern ourselves about. We will watch. The good thing about gas tax is the actual collections go up during the summer. So we expect to see higher levels of collections during the summer months as people drive, and especially this year. I think people are going to be driving a lot now. The next point, we do know fuel prices are going up, so sometimes that will impact our collections, so we'll monitor that as well. We look to the state economists, they, again, they do just a great job in giving the local municipalities data. And again, we'll get these estimates in August. The last slide covers our impact fees. I think what's so interesting here is, as you can see, our residential permits pulled to date are in line with last year, which is a positive thing, considering where we've been the first six months of this year, and it's actually already exceeded the budget amount, which is a good thing. I will let y'all know that impact fees are by far and large the most difficult task to budget for a municipality, because as you all know, they pay when they pull the permit, and until you see someone walking in the door with a check to pull a permit to construct a house, you're never certain. You know, developments based upon the construction industry, developments can move faster, they can move slower, certain areas, product lines could move faster than others. So it's, it's hard to tell. I mean, it is better to, in my opinion, better to budget conservatively because until you get the impact fees, you shouldn't budget to spend them. That's the main thing. It's unlike ad valorem and sales tax. We know those are coming in at a steady pace. This one, so many things can impact it, so we like to make sure we have the money. We can serve, budget conservatively, so we don't budget to spend funds we don't have. We already said non-residential real estate. That's listed here. You'll see it called commercial sometimes. It's basically everything that's not classified as residential. We've seen a significant slowdown with respect to new construction, and as we've talked about here, we believe, or we're being told, it could be the uncertainty with respect to the vacancy rates that may be in office and retail after we come back out of this. Hopefully, you know, everything comes back, but I think that's some of the new construction maybe isn't moving as fast because of that. But that concludes our presentation. I wanted to see if y'all had any questions.
Yes, Lisa, I see, first, this is grant revenues, $36 million?
Yes.
Is that in hand, or that's what we're expecting? Is half a match? Or can you explain a little bit about that? That's a lot, that's a big number.
Yes. Matt is preparing to speak.
I can give you a simple, simple description. Those numbers are committed, so those are not, you're not waiting on those dollars. Have we spent all of it? No. No. A lot of it's, you know, on reimbursement basis, but it is not, those are not asks or open requests. Those are, those are commitments. Most of them are already under funding agreements, where we've signed essentially contracts for the dollars, but it does, I mean, there's a lot of different grant programs representative in that number. But that is not money that is on a wish list, so to speak. It is, it is under some form of commitment.
Okay, so it says 36 million, and then it has year-to-date, 1,606.
Yes.
That's how much we've spent, or been reimbursed, or?
I believe that's the amount that we have been reimbursed. There may be, typically, you know, you ask the state or another funding entity for the funds, and it's usually, it could be 90 days before you actually get them, so there may be some that are in process. I believe that, you know, the whole 36 million wasn't committed at the beginning of the fiscal year, so some of them have come online as you've moved through the fiscal year with respect to your ability to get the grant agreement and fund, start spending the money. So it'll be, it'll be some time, and we may, how this would work, I envision, absent any changes to the grant agreement, whatever we don't spend for those grants, as long as the timelines continue to next fiscal year, we will roll those over. A lot of these grants aren't, you know, aren't designed to be completed in, in six months, 12 months. If I misspeak, Matt will correct me, but generally speaking.
No, many of them are multi-year.
Yes, so typically they are.
And every dollar is restricted, though?
Yes, exactly. As you see on there, the only fund that's truly unrestricted at everything is your general fund. All these others are restricted by the enabling legislation. And that, so that we put them in a separate fund, so we can actually separate the funds and account for them accordingly.
Sounds like we're in pretty good shape. What do you think, Chris?
From the federal government, as part of the $7 million that's been allocated to the city, are we going to have to set up a separate revenue category for that, because they will come with restrictions for, say, infrastructure?
Yes, I believe what we'll probably do with that, in compliance with accounting guidelines, is put it into a grant fund. It'll get its own little sub-fund, like all the grants actually get their own, you know, sub-fund category, so you can actually run a little financial statement for each of the grants and see where they are. But that's the way we would be tracking that. And it is going to be restricted as to use.
But at the moment, it's only a newspaper article, is that right?
Yes, we've only received notification, and this is the second number that we've gotten, so we don't, I don't believe we have an agreement, I don't believe we have a letter.
No, no, no. We have agreements on a lot of these grants. Most of them are beyond newspaper articles and are, are grant commitments. The one that Councilman Corey just mentioned is a two-step grant. Right now, we've been doing the engineering, we'll be hearing the presentation next city council meeting. Assuming that we move forward, the remaining $7 million will come. So they are beyond just notifications. They, they are in some form of commitment. Most of them are under funding agreements. Some of those funding agreements, depending on the grant, are two-step funding agreements, where the larger amount of funding comes when you get to construction. We have two of them currently that are under design. We just wrapped up Pine Lake Preserve, which is a construction grant. So you'll start to see the reimbursement coming. I'm sorry, Lisa, I know you're new, but these are not newspaper articles.
I think he was, I believe he was speaking about the American Rescue Plan, that we just got the notification. So that was a different grant, so I.
I'm sorry. There's a point of confusion.
Actually, thank you, Matt, because they were asking about your grant money, so all that detail they needed for the 36 million, but the 7 million is, you were asking about the American Rescue Plan?
Yes.
That's the, the second number we've gotten. I don't think we've gotten an offer letter firming that up or anything, so it's just...
We've, we've not got an official contract for that grant yet, which would include then restrictions of how that funding could be used, and we'd have to bring that back for proposal to council of how we would utilize those funds. But this is the second notice of funding that we received. So there was a higher amount, if you recall, there was a 24 million, $25 million number that has been changed to the approximately 7 million, but we would need official notice of funding and a contract, either through the state, I would imagine, as a sub-recipient through the state or county, coming forthright, which would be, bring back to council.
Well, this is being voted on by the federal government, or is it already voted on?
It's already, my understanding, it's already been approved, it's American Rescue Plan. And just so that you all are aware, this last number, the first number we received was, appeared to be significantly out of line, because it's supposed to be population-based. So we compared ourselves to all the other municipalities in the Lee County who would be receiving eligible based on our criteria. We understood over 50,000, and we were way out of line. So this new number, we've at least, the new 7 million number, we've looked at, and it looks like, looking at where we are in relation to our population with the other entities, it appears to be more in line with what, what we understood the program to be with respect to our population.
Ask the news press where they got their information.
Well, that was actually, the, the first number that they had was actually a published number that came from the same body that this new number came from, and what they explained to us, we did a couple, some training on it, some detail. It appears that whoever was in charge of the bill or calculating the allocations for municipalities based it on some very, very old census data. So they were going to, they knew their numbers were wrong after they issued them, so they went back to each individual state and researched the correct census. They used our revenue numbers that we use every year, because we update our population. The University of Florida does every year for this. So they went to those, and it appears, based on what we're getting, that they're more in line with what we would have expected.
Very good.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes?
I just want to ask you a question. Could you just review how, what the formula is for the state shared revenues and for the local option gas tax? How's that? I, I think there's a formula that's used in order to determine how we're doing that. I think it's by population, but has that, my question is, has that changed? Are we in a better position from the formula, or a worse position? Or don't you know?
I don't believe there have been significant changes to the state shared revenue calculation. It is, as most things with larger governments, is very quite complex, but generally speaking, it does follow our population, generally speaking. There are different, lots of different revenue sources that go into that, and they take on different natures of their own, but generally speaking, it's the population. In fact, when our population in Benita jumped about 5%, we saw a 5% jump in a lot of these things that came out. So it definitely, we've, we've seen that in the past. Now, the local option gas tax, that's actually approved at the county level, and we participate in that with an inter-local agreement with the county. And that's, again, based on our population, our lane miles, and we've not seen significant changes to that, and we do not anticipate that, because we don't see ourselves, you know, they, they adjust it for additional lane miles and additional population every few years. So that's where that adjustment happens, with the new inter-local.
Thank you.
Is lane miles, are there county lane miles, or all are lane miles?
Well, the, because Lee County, excuse me, the local option gas tax is county-wide. It starts out, the county's population is part of it, unincorporated, and then each municipality, their population, their lane miles are in that formula. It's actually, all the formulas in your inter-local agreement is an attachment as well, but...
You're really on top of it, Lisa. I really liked that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to present to y'all.
Anything else?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few other announcements. I wanted to remind everyone in the public, we are continuing our proactive campaign to remind everyone of sea turtle season. We do have documented loggerhead sea turtle nests on the beach, and we're going to continue our door hanger program, and reminders to folks, even our visiting guests, that to please keep the sea turtle friendly lighting in check. Additionally, June 1st will be the beginning of hurricane season. As we've said before, we, we train all year long for this season to begin. We will have updates for you in June, but wanted to remind the public that if they would like to visit www.lee.gov/ hurricane, there are videos and important information for you to prepare your family for the beginning of hurricane season and to have your plans in place. Additionally, we are very pleased to announce that the June 2nd city council meeting will be held at City Hall. We are, we are asking that you be a little patient with staff, as we have a transition plan for staff to move back into the facility. Our first goal was to move the public in first and to begin meetings, so we are still working through some technology needs and placement and movement of folks, but, but we will be able to have also additional community meetings, any meetings that the council members wish to have can also be rearranged, instead of the Lyles Hotel could be facilitated back at City Hall. I'd also like to remind everyone that the June 2nd meeting, and this will be, information will be available as soon as we can, that we will be updating you all on the stormwater CIP items, and this does include discussion of the Spring Creek Albany to Golf Course project that is in our budget in the CIP. We're going to go over all the stormwater CIPs, but this has been a specific topic of interest for many of the public, so I want to make sure to be prepared that will be at our June 2nd meeting. That meeting, of course, is at 5:30 PM. We did want to advise that the July workshops with city council members and staff regarding budget, workshop budgets, July 7th, the city council meeting at 5:30 will be solely a budget meeting. So we will, we will make that meeting, the only items will be budget, unless there becomes an urgent situation that we need to have a vote on an item, we'll, we'll address that with you beforehand, but the focus of the July 7th meeting will be budget. The July 21st meeting at 5 will be moved to 5:30 PM, and we will conduct our regular city business and then move directly into the budget as well.
Yes, do you have any meetings in September on the budget?
We do, and I think we announced those the last time. Just give me one second. We set the July, it was September. Lisa, do you have it on your calendar real quick, because it's...
I apologize. This is going, this is going to date me somewhat, but I have a paper calendar on my desk, and I did bring it with me. Deb, you have those dates handy, don't you? You already know, so September hearing dates?
September.
I think what we need to do is, we need to have the clerk populate all of our calendars for those dates, just to make sure.
I think, I think I already have them written down, I just don't remember.
I believe we moved the one to September 14th in the evening at 5:30, but we will repopulate out that, a calendar invite. Debbie will be sending a calendar invite.
Yes.
And the 21st?
29.
That's at 9:00 or at 5:30? Because earlier you said 5:30.
The 21st of which?
Of July?
Debbie, do you have that date in?
I have the September, it's going to be September 15th.
No, ma'am, no, we moved that to the 14th.
The July?
No, September 14th because of the holiday.
Yep.
It's down before.
That's right.
We'll get those out to you. I apologize about that. We'll have the clerk populate it. But I believe you were speaking about the July meeting. Was that the 21st one? I believe that one was originally at 9:00 AM, but now it's going to be at 5:30.
We'll move that to 5:30 PM, correct.
Yes, and we do need, Deb, we do need to populate it.
And then we go right into a meeting.
Correct.
Yes, and we'll get the clerk to populate everyone's calendar. Thank y'all for your patience.
Should we eat before? Are you going to feed us?
We'll make sure we have snacks, so everyone's sufficiently brain-powered up.
Okay, let's see. City Council reports. Amy, you have anything to report for us tonight, today?
Not too much to report. I did attend the Habitat for Humanity ribbon-cutting for their, their new street partnership lane, which was really good to see that project moving along, and also to see the success of our Benita Drive landscaping and sidewalk projects, so that, you know, it was good, I enjoyed it for two reasons. I also attended the Art in Public Places meeting last night, and you'll be seeing an appointment for the lease of one of the artist cottages. And I also attended the Veterans Committee meeting, and we're making plans for Memorial Day and veterans, and there's, there'll be some information coming out of that soon, but we don't have to talk about it tonight.
So you have any plans on Memorial Day?
Yes, we have plans for Memorial Day. We have a, you know, a schedule of speakers and things like that, and we're making, we're making progress on it. Are you coming?
We're, we're hoping that ban shall be fixed by then, right?
Well, they, they asked about that, so I, that's one of the things that they want to...
We are hopeful, we are finishing the engineering plans and permitting. We did have to have a structural engineer review the structure for safety, so we're hopeful that that, that is the plan, but as best we can, we'll accommodate, we will accommodate it at the park, however we need to.
And that'll be at 9 o'clock?
9 o'clock, correct.
Very good. Anything else?
Are you all set?
Jesse?
Oh, yeah, I'm set. Yes, sir. I would just like to say, Deputy Luna, would you mind standing up? We missed, the, the city of Benita Springs, just by a week, missed Law Enforcement Week, and Lee County does a hell of a job keeping us safe. And I, you know, I can't say it to all of them, because they're all out in the streets right now, but they're kind enough to assign you to be here for us. So from us to you all, I would like to thank you for your service, your continued protection of our city, and I just want you to know that people like us can't do what we do without people like you who do what you do. So that's my only item, and I just wanted to, that's why we had to do the pledge this morning. So if you are confused at why he did the pledge this morning, he did the pledge this morning because I wanted to recognize that Law Enforcement Week had passed. Anyway, Deputy Luna, thank you so much for your service.
I'd like to give a round of applause to the Sheriff's Department. Thank you, Jesse. Laura?
Okay. I, too, was at the Habitat. It was wonderful, the street naming. Also, built cages for turtles at Lover's Key to protect them against the raccoons, who are very clever. And the deputies there were thrilled that we built so many, they actually went and got more rebar, and we made more. So they were happy, because they're too busy to build them during the day. And I'd like to thank Governor DeSantis for ending mandatory masks, for not issuing vaccination passports, and expanding school choice. We now have the largest expansion of school choice in, in the whole nation. So it's so wonderful. And the Elks Club is having a memorial ceremony at 11 o'clock, and they would like to know who all will be there, especially you, Mr. Mayor. So if somebody could get back to Shirley Thompson, it's 11 o'clock, so it'll kind of be quick, if you're able to go, so. And it's Shirley Thompson, that if you guys could get back to her, she'd love that.
We, we can help coordinate if, if, if any council member wants to attend, we can let, we can let the Elks Club know. We can help.
I'm sorry, what?
We can help facilitate that, if a council member would like us to RSVP for them to, we will, we'll help do that.
Okay, I attended Rich Donnelly's memorial service on Saturday at the Lover's Key Building that he helped build and raised the money for and designed. Didn't realize, I, I mentioned that he was such a public servant for the city, and he always did his homework, and he was very decisive. But I didn't know he was a Yale graduate, that's just kind of impressive, but there was a wonderful crowd, a wonderful group of people from friends of Lover's Key and his family and stuff. It was, it was quite moving, and that building is beautiful, and, let's see. Tree Advisory Board, they did an Arbor Day, first grade through eighth grade, they had posters made up by the children, and there must have been 200 of them, and they judged them per grade, and they get a cash reward to the winners. And you get, you get 200, every, every poster was different. You know, it says, we're all different, and we're all made differently, on purpose. So that was a very nice memorial for the Arbor Day, since we were so limited with this COVID recently. But next year, we'll, we'll be on top of it. I think that's all I have for us. Thank you. Chris?
Yeah. Met with the Technology Committee Monday evening, and they're starting a project to determine how the city can encourage businesses. determine how the city can encourage businesses to add electric vehicle charging stations in their parking lots. What's the, what can be used to motivate that? There is a large increase in the number of electronic vehicles in Lee County as reported by the Department of Motor Vehicles. Big concern is always where are you going to be able to charge so you can keep moving around? So they'll be studying that and bringing a report forward to the city. They're not anticipating, it's the role of the city to create electronic charging stations or spend money to do it, but to use the various powers of the city to encourage businesses to put those kinds of charging stations in. So more on that later, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Chris. Mike?
I'm good, thanks.
Fred?
Heeding, they discussed that they're still going to try and get us some money to put into the, beyond the PD&E study for 41 and Beach Road, and that's a good thing. They've, they're getting something like 3.25 million bucks, and they'll, they want to put some of that money into moving the design along further so it can be eligible to get quote-unquote almost shovel-ready project money when the infrastructure grants start coming out. The other thing I want to tell everybody, the Gulf of Mexico is, in my opinion, at a pretty high temperature already. Last week it was 80 degrees out, way out, in at the shores, 84. What that means is by the time we get to our hurricane season, which is usually August, it should be a whole lot hotter, which means that any hurricane that happens to be in the Gulf is going to have all the fuel it needs to keep, keep that head of steam up and actually probably get more, more speed. That doesn't mean that we're going to get hit by a hurricane. Doesn't mean Florida. It just means that any hurricane that tracks through the Gulf is going to get all the energy it needs to make it worse or keep it where it is.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, we have to do the minutes.
Oh, public comment.
Who's running this meeting?
Oh, you are, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I move to accept the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Any comments on the minutes? Roll call, please, Debbie.
Mayor Steinmaier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crumbah?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, now my favorite time, public comment. Come on, folks. Hey, Mr. Aaron, Mayor Aaron, I'm so glad to see you. You've been, had a struggle here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Councilpeople, staff. My name is Jay Aaron, and it looks like you're going to have fun for the next couple of weeks or months, maybe, going through the budget. That's always a good time. I can tell that from experience. I'd just like to comment to you that the Senior Citizens Organization is still very interested in the public library over here for a building, and the fact that we just heard about taxes and, and how they can be affected and everything else, here sets an asset that can be made into a great value for the city and take care of the needs that we have for the senior citizens in our area. So while you're going through the budget process, we'll probably be in here once in a while listening to you, and we want to make sure you understand where we're coming from, how we think we can help you get this building, make it a valuable asset by not raising taxes or anything, but by doing it through the concept of government light, where we will go out and raise the funds to make this a multimillion-dollar facility. So just keep this in mind and hope to hear from you in the next month or so about what the county has decided it's worth and so on and so forth. I just want you to know that the people that are behind the senior citizen thing are a lot of the same people that were behind and are behind the Cafe of Life. And the Cafe of Life is a organization that has saved this city thousands and thousands of dollars, tax dollars, by taking care of the needs of the needy, and it's all been done with volunteers, and these same people that are on the board there are on the board for the senior citizens, same members are both, both organizations. So there's a lot of good leadership in that organization, and I think we can get the job done.
I'd like to commend, commend you, Jay Aaron, for your efforts with the Cafe of Life and finding a location that was a gift to the community, and I understand it's just a wonderful program that's going on there. I have a question, a request for you and your seniors is to email or write to the county and demand them to do something with that library. It's their library. They're dragging their feet. They don't know whether they're going to sell it, give it away, tear it down, whatever. So I ask you to run a camp, an advertisement campaign to the county. I think we pretty well understand what the county is going to ask us to do.
Point of information.
So Mayor, no, I would like to correct that. We've been in constant communication with Lee County staff regarding this. They have been forthright in giving us the information. We had advised them, we had provided you with a report, a preliminary report on what would be needed in the initial transfer, and we've advised them that we would be bringing that to you all at our budget process. So this is not a delay on the Lee County Department's side at all. This is us with our evaluation to you, and then we were to continue on it. Once we have had the budget discussion, we would have an official vote from the council to ask us to pursue the transfer of the, of the library and those terms. So there's no, there's no need for a campaign on that side. We have been, and I also understand, there's been individual council members repeatedly in talks with Commissioner Sandelli, and he has been supportive of the conversation of the transfer of the facility. So we are in partnership with them on this.
Is there a dollar figure involved?
I think that is to be, the first step would be the discussion of the council during the budget on the actual transfer. You would then direct staff to negotiate an agreement and bring that back.
All they indicated, everything's on the table from a, just a transfer at no price to some negotiated amount. The county has no position on it. They're waiting for us to ask them as to what we want to do, what our plans are for the, for the building, so.
I just want to reinforce that with my conversations with Commissioner Sandelli. He's been very supportive of the project, and I, there is a process that we in the city have to go through because we do, the building needs some work, and that's what, that's what we have to consider. But there's, you know, they're waiting for us to, to go through our process, which we have to do from a legal point of view anyway. And I appreciate all the support that we've gotten from Commissioner Sandelli and the other members of the Lee County Commissioner.
Hey, Jay, have you, point of information?
Yes.
You want to remember that library, it's a people's library, that building is, the people's building. It was paid for out of the funds that people paid to become members of the library system. And we did a study in the early 2000s, probably Debbie's the only one here that might remember this, but there was, the county made very good money off of the library system down here, and so I don't, you know, I feel that the building really belongs to the people, and the people that pretty much paid for it are the people that need the service and all.
Yes, well, again, have you raised any funds towards this?
We'll be able to raise the funds to fix it, to generate, we can generate the money to rehab the building, and we've already budgeted what we think it'll cost.
Have you collected any money yet?
What's that?
Have you collected any money?
We can't, we can't collect money until we have something to tell people that this is what we wanted the money for. We have, we have an operation, we are organized 501(c)(3), we are legal, you know, we're ready to go. We have people, we are operating now at a Hope Lutheran Church with a couple of different programs, but there are a lot of organizations that are waiting to see what can happen to come in here and provide services for senior citizens. We just need a facility.
Can you get some pledges? Is there legal, collect pledges?
Can I do a logistic point of order on this?
Point of order here.
Just, but logistically, just so everybody understands, and there's no, no unmet expectations, first things first, we have to get the building from the county. Now, we're not getting the building from the county specifically to be A, B, C, or D. First step is getting the building, then we need to do the work in the building, and then as we move forward, we would be discussing all of the, all of the folks who have expressed interest to us that they would like the building. So this isn't a situation where they can now raise money now and say, okay, they have the money, so we're doing it. It's first things first, we get the building from the county to the city, then from there, then we evaluate all of the people who have come to us and said they want it, and then we go from there. But first things first, it's, it's city and county. It's not a, it's not appropriate for any nonprofit group to start raising money to buy it right now because that's a wake hurt before the horse. We have to get the building first and then figure out best use after.
If we take the building, we're obligated. We have a financial obligation.
Point of order. This, I'm sorry, could you, Derek, could you please clarify what's appropriate dialogue with public comment and, and the council here at this point? I don't mind talking about this, but I don't think this is the appropriate time or venue.
Yes, there's no, we're not discussing any action items at this, at this moment. This is simply public comment. The public comment is, is reflective of something that will come to the council in the future, at which point the council will decide whether they even want the building. So we have the reports. If we want the building, part of that discussion, as Arlene pointed out, is what it would take to rehab the building or what, what use will, will be viable for the building, and that will come, you'll do that during your budgeting process, and at the conclusion of that, you'll decide whether you're going to ask the county for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, you want a dialogue, and I'm trying to have a dialogue here. Ask some questions to...
Excuse me, point of order.
I would like to offer the opportunity to meet one-on-one with anybody and explain where we're coming from and what we plan on doing. I realize we can't talk about it here.
I think that, I think, I think that's the point. This is, this is just public comment, and it should not be a dialogue. If there is a discussion, it should be something that's set on the agenda.
Okay, well, thanks, Jay. We'll get it. Any other public comments? Here it comes. Ben?
What did you think I waited this long? Ben Hirschenson, Avenue Drive. The last time I addressed the city council with what I'm about to bring up, there was a loud groan from the city council. That was several years ago. I think some, some of you may remember. The 2020 census is over, and usually when, when the census is completed, you hear that horrible word of redistricting. Now, I don't know whether there are any plans or any concerns, discussions relative to looking at the council districts in the city of Benita Springs. Population has changed, perhaps. I don't know. It certainly have gone up in the last 10 years, but maybe, and you want to have districts that are as equally represented as possible. So I have no ulterior motive, nothing specific, other than saying, will there be a plan for, looking at the question of redistricting? We, I know the charter does say six districts, but maybe it's time to think beyond that. I just don't know. So I'm just throwing the word out there, and when I throw words out and perhaps suggest more work, I'm willing to participate in any committee or any process that might lead to a consideration of city redistricting. I think it's very important to have the population as equally represented as possible, where there's, say, roughly the same amount of people in each district regardless of the number. So that's all I want to say at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any other public comment? Adjourned.